Are you there, Council Ramsey?
Hello? Hello?
You're there?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay. So, we acknowledged, or we acknowledge that land in which we gather is the traditional unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation. Call to order. Just want to follow up quickly with Chief of Police Brad McConnell's ceremony, recognizing some of the police officers that were part of the clean sweep back in 2013. They are Deputy Chief Jennifer McCarron, Sergeant Alan Kelly, Corporal Brian Donnelly, Constable Michael Kennedy, who is retired, Constable Randy Curry, retired, Constable Reginald Wood, Corporal Robert Larder, and Constable Brody Bonus. And also recognized for his service to the city, and commendation was granted to him by the chief, Corporal Kaiser for his extraordinary work in the, in the, in the community, day in, day out, whether it's at schools, or it's on the streets. Corporal Kaiser, I refer to him as the prince of police, does a great job for all of us here at City Hall. Constable Connor McGinnis was sworn in, sworn in as a new police officer, and as the chief said, he lives and resides in Ward 10. And also Reverend Scott McKaisak was sworn in as our new chaplain. So, congratulations to all those individuals who were recognized by our Chief of Police and his staff. And I would like to draw your attention to a disease that impacts many in our community. October 12th is World Arthritis Day, an important time for us to spread awareness about arthritis, a chronic and painful disease that affects one in five Canadians. Yes, that's right, one in five Canadians. This makes arthritis Canada's most chronic illness. This disease is often, often misunderstood as an older person's disease. The fact is that it can look like anyone, a child, a teenager, a young mother, an adult, or a senior. So, to stand in, as we stand in solidarity, solidarity with those with arthritis, the Charlestown City Tower, our clock tower, along with other landmarks across the country, will be lit up in blue on Tuesday, October 12th, World Arthritis Day. I urge you to champion the urgency for action to end this incurable disease. Find out how you can help stop the agony of arthritis by visiting arthritis.ca. So, prove declarations of conflict of interest. Any, okay, I have two. I have Counsel Twill, conflict which issue? Is it under planning? Is that a STR? Counsel Beck?
Just one second.
Same one.
Under the STR licensing.
Is that the only two? Okay, and Deputy Mayor Yankoff, conflict of interest, just one second. Go ahead.
And that would fall under the Economic Tourism and Cultural Development Committee. There's two resolutions, just one is a past employee, and the other is a client of the past employees, so.
So, you'll be removing yourself for both?
I will remove myself from both.
Okay, that duly noted.
Thank you.
Anymore? Okay. Approval, approval of the agenda. I know that Counsel Ramsey reached out to me. Counsel Ramsey, did you want to make a request?
Yes, Your Worship, I'm wondering if I can be pushed to number one there tonight? Does I have another function?
Six point, six point six becomes six point one, and everything moves down accordingly. Any problem with that?
Is that okay with counsel?
Is he six point two? No, oh, sorry, thank you, he's protective and emergency services, yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Beck. So, six point two becomes six point one, six point one becomes six two, six point two. Any, moved? Moved. Okay, you want to speak to it? Just one second.
Also, Mr. Ramsey, or Counsel Ramsey beat me to this, but I'd like six point six moved up to the top as well. The manager of Economic Tourism is away, and he's on the line, and needs to get back to his business, so if we can move six point six up to six point two now.
Good. Counsel Beck? You moving that? Moved by Counsel Beck, second by Counsel Bernard? Okay, so, six point two becomes six point one, six point two becomes six point six. We know the order, we'll follow it. Okay, all those in favor? Counsel Ramsey, yea or nay?
Yea.
Okay. So, I have the adoption of previous draft minutes. I have minutes from the regular monthly meetings, September 11th, 2023, public planning meeting, September 6th, 2023, special meetings, September 23rd and 25th, 2023. Need someone to move the adoption of those minutes?
I'll move it.
Okay, moved by Counsel Ramsey, second by Counsel McKinnon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Counsel Twill, no problem. Okay. Counsel Ramsey, yea or nay?
Yea.
Okay.
Yes.
Business arising out of the minutes. Okay. See none. So, six point two now becomes first item on the agenda, so we have the two chiefs here. If you want to step up to the mic.
Thank you very much, Your Worship, and all of counsel for letting me go first tonight. I don't really ask for that a whole lot, but I, I'm on a mission here. We met September 26th, the minutes are in your package, and I believe, Your Worship, there's one resolution for counsel to consider. If, if they have any questions, I would certainly try and answer them.
Okay, I have Counsel Twill, Counsel Matarde, and Counsel McCabe. Counsel Twill.
Thank you. Thank you for your report, Counsel Ramsey. As you know, the drug issue in the city of Charlestown, particularly around the outreach center, has been extensive, it's been troublesome, and the residents of the community are continuing to request that the drug trade be, be decimated and be devastated, so that the quality of life in this community and the residents that are paying the taxes have the same quality of life that exists in other parts of the city. So, my question to you, Counsel Ramsey, because you're the chair, to the Chief of Police, since the meeting was held at Birchwood Junior High School, where there were four, 500 people in attendance, drug usage was one of the main topics, one of the main issues. And I'd like to know tonight, on behalf of the community, as to what the plans are to move, to move in that direction, what the strategy is, and moving forward, what are the expectations that the residents can expect?
Counsel Ramsey?
Yes, thank you for that question, Counsel Twill, and as I stated in the past, it's very hard, and everybody in the whole city, not just in Ward 4, because everybody drives by it, and things that they see every day. But what I'm going to do, if it's okay, Your Worship, is pass it on to the chief, because there is a plan, we're slowly working on it, and we're hoping that we can get some more answers. Thank you.
Chief.
Thank you, Your Worship. You know, when I, you know, I hear Counselor Twill's concerns about the drug problem, and I guess I hear a lack of recognition for the work being done by our team at the CPS. No one seizes more drugs and deals with the problem with greater veracity than our police services. It's a complex issue, founded largely in a deep-rooted mental health issue. I can tell you, our team is working night and day, and the plan has always been, and always will be, to get our drugs, get drugs off the street, work to prevent drugs from coming into our province, and hold those accountable, those that are selling drugs to the marginalized population and exploiting the issues that surround the outreach center. That is our priority. If you look at the recent headlines by our police services, I challenge you to find any other police services that are putting up the numbers that we are. And so, I guess, in response to, Your Worship, to Counsel Twill, is, you know, I will continue to support my team in this very difficult job of combating illicit drug trade and dealing with the underlying issues that surround them.
Counsel Matarde, then we'll come back for your second question.
Thank you, Your Worship. To the Chair, I guess on September 5th, there was a community meeting held at Birchwood School, which was going to receive feedback from the community on the concerns they had. And I do recall, there was a survey that was circulated around, and also, I think counsel had an expectation that there would be a number of actionable items that came as a result of the feedback that was received. So, my question to the Chair, to the chief, is, when can we expect to see some results of that survey that was compiled? And two actionable items that are coming out of there that can be reported back to the community? That already hasn't been communicated. I, I know that there was some announcements made, I think, on that night, one being zero tolerance for trespassing, so I see that as one actionable item. There may be others that come from the feedback, so if I could just get an update as to where we are with compiling that information and putting together some form of report that will outline some further actionable items throughout the community would be great. Thank you.
Counsel Ramsey?
I would like to pass that on to the chief, as that's operational, sir.
Chief of Police, Brad McConnell.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. Counsel Matarde, certainly our purpose of the, of the meeting at Birchwood was to engage residents and look for their feedback, and part of that was a survey. But it was also part of a broader consultation with ongoing meetings with other stakeholders. Now, I can return something to counsel that's short-sighted, and not well-thought-through, and certainly doesn't factor in the evolving situation that we're faced, if that's what counsel wants. But we're in a very dynamic situation here, and it's going to take time, it's going to take thought, it's going to take a lot of community consultation to present something meaningful, and ask for your patience in delivering that.
Okay, Counsel McCabe.
Thank you. I have two questions for the Chair, okay? So, I'll get them out at the same time.
Great, great.
And kind of piggybacking on both Counsel Twill and Counsel Duran, it was more looking for an update, kind of what was happening with the downtown strategy, safety strategy, and any kind of actionable items that might be coming. And I'm hearing that, yes, there is things that are being worked on, and for us to have some patience as you proceed, but updates on that would be helpful, so that we're able to be in the know and communicate that as well as we can, too. I know that there's been increase in foot patrol, and some things I've heard some positive feedback for, for sure, but there's, there's certainly still a lot of work, of course, as we all know, so I don't need to ask anymore. I was wondering about the community action plan. And I want to thank Counsel Beck, because I was reading in the minutes from your committee meeting where he followed up when I questioned around the fire positions that we approved in budget last, last budget time. And I did see where it was kind of indicated that it is an operational issue, and that they're working on negotiating and getting that in place. And I guess, you know, for me, I appreciate that, and I certainly don't want to get into the operations, but it, it's important for us to stay on this when we approve three positions that were expressed as a big need for our city. And I'm just, years passed, where we're still not, these positions aren't filled. So, you know, as we're starting to approach into budget time, and I'm sure people are going to be looking for more resources as we continue to grow as a city, it's just wanting to make sure that we're using the resources that we've already approved. So, that was my purpose, and I just wanted to put that out there, not for people to think I was trying to get into the operations by any means, and I know, I don't know all the information, but it was to make sure that we stay on when we've approved this. I mean, the money's there, what's happening if we're not fulfilling the positions, so.
Counsel Ramsey?
Thank you for that. Counsel McCabe, yes, and it hasn't talked about, and it is operational. In fact, we sort of met on it there last week, but it is operational, and if, if the Fire Chief would like to sort of make a comment on that, he, he can certainly, go ahead, Your Worship.
Fire Chief Tim Mamie.
Thank you, Your Worship, Chair, and Counsel McCabe for your question. Yes, I see it was discussed last month when I wasn't, wasn't at the meeting. The request through mayor and council that I made last year for the additional three members was so that we could move off of our current schedule and actually employ a four-platoon system, which would require the additional personnel. We went through the process, made the conditional job offers based on that actual move to a trial or an actual four-platoon schedule. We haven't been able to, to this date, and we're into arbitration this week, have a partner that, in the union, that's willing to come off stances that we've had. That's where the holdup's been. I couldn't unilaterally implement a new schedule, since we are in arbitration freeze, and the schedule is part of the collective agreement. But in dealing with the union several times throughout the past year, just could not get a, a partner to meet in the middle and get these people in place. But that is the reason that we required three additional personnel, not for our current schedule, for the changed schedule that would be improved work-life balance for our members, give them more time off and away from the station, and also improve our, our operations and overtime costs, which was the main reason, one of the main reasons for bringing it forward as well.
Counsel Duran.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Thank you, Counsel Ramsey, for your report. I, I hear the chief talk about the drug, and it's a difficult job, and I understand that. I can certainly, you know, realize what's going on with, with the drug trade, but we, we have to get some type of solution. And when I woke up, I think Thursday or Friday morning, I read a, a piece in The Guardian, and I'll, and I'll say, you know, maybe this is a tool for the chief, and the mayor, and maybe our CIO, and the Chair of Strategic Development, to meet with Premier King. It said, "A law would make drug use illegal in public spaces. New legislation introduced Thursday in British Columbia makes it illegal to use drugs in almost all public spaces, including parks, beaches, playgrounds, bus stops, outside the doorways of businesses, residences, and recreation centers. It's a significant walkback of the government's decriminalization policy launched in January." So, out in B.C., they're, they're overwhelmed with this, and I know. So, now the government is introducing new legislation, and I think our government's going to be sitting fairly soon here. I wonder if we can get a group here together to meet with Premier King, to see if we could, you know, introduce new legislation to piggyback on, on what B.C. is doing. You know, it, it's something here that it's, it's overrunning our city, and I know you've, you've said we need more officers, we're looking at that. The mayor has introduced, the last two months at our finance meeting, to look at the books to see if we can get more officers. But in hindsight, if we get more officers, is, is the officers that we do employ going to be able to, you know, look at the drug trade, look at the people that are involved in drugs? Are they going to help with the situation? So, this is, this is what I'm, I'm saying. If we can look at new legislation to help the police, to get more officers to help them, maybe this is something that, you know, city council can look at, but first of all, we have to get the premier to meet and, and, and sit down, like, this is an emergency. I've never seen this in my whole life, of how many people are walking around, like I said, like zombies. So, so we're going to have to do something here with the help of the police department, and hopefully, our government. Again, you know, I just, I just want to be able to get a meeting together to see if we can move forward on this. Thank you.
Counsel.
Thank you for that, Counsel Duran. That's, I read the same article, I believe, was Thursday morning, Guardian, and in fact, I, I don't know if the chief's seen it or not, but I was going to send it to him, too, and I thought, it's a fantastic idea what you have. Like, we got to meet with the province, and we got to sit down with them, and we got to say, this is our city, and we have to do something about it, so maybe we can show them the same article and sort of take it from there. But I think it's a fantastic idea. Thank you.
Do you want the chief to comment?
If he could.
Chief Brad McConnell.
Your Worship, Counsel Duran, yeah, I did see that article, and certainly, I think discussion on the, on this very challenging topic, looking for ways to mitigate the impact is, is very important, and having the tools and the federal legislation that we can follow through with some of these enforcement efforts. But I also, you know, want to be mindful not to lose sight of all the needed prevention efforts, like, if we're focusing, focusing our efforts and our enforcement, or our resources totally on enforcement, we've lost sight on the need for the, for the forward-thinking prevention that will ultimately have the biggest impact. So, although we need the legislation to allow us to force this, we also need to invest on that prevention side and upstream approaches, so we're not, so we don't have the, the market that currently exists for the, for the groups to, to bring drugs into our province. So, I think it's a good idea, and I'd certainly be open to explore it, but also talk about the need of resources for prevention also.
Counsel Twill.
Thank you, Chief.
Second time, Counsel Twill. You're on.
John?
Yep, you're on.
Just to parallel what Counsel Duran highlighted, I read that article as well. I think, I think that's a good starting point, Counsel Duran, but to be honest with you, I don't think it goes fair enough. I think it's got to go a lot further. So, when I talk about, you know, drug usage and drug trafficking in around our city schools... So when I talk about, you know, drug usage and drug trafficking in around our city schools, in around our parks, rails of trails, heritage squares, private property, particularly in the high-density areas, is not only problematic, it's also dangerous. And I think that's a good starting point, but I think we got to go a lot further. And, you know, I would certainly welcome the opportunity to meet with the premier, meet with the Attorney General, to sit down. These are the elected people, and I think we need to sit down with the elected people to discuss just how serious this is. And it is, it is a crisis situation. People don't feel safe in their communities. That's been highlighted and illustrated time and time again, time and time again. So it's our job to do whatever it takes to make our community safe. And I know, you know, some patrols have been out in the neighborhood. I've talked to some of the residents, but we've got to do everything in our power. Every stone has to be turned over to make sure that every option is looked at, every strategy is examined, so that we can demonstrate to the residents, here are the results of the work that we're doing on their behalf. That's why we're here. So I think that's a good starting point, Counselor Duran, and chief. You know, we've got to turn this around, and I know you understand that. The meeting and the residents that spoke at Birchwood Junior High School, a lot of them expressed their frustration, and it hasn't stopped. That frustration is being echoed and talked about seven days of the week, 24 hours around the clock. So, you know, I'd certainly be willing to sit down with the elected officials at the provincial level, at the federal level, and we've got to do this sooner rather than later, because this is serious. This is really serious. I said it at our last meeting, you know, there's at least 25 homes that are up for sale, 25 homes that I'm aware of that are up for sale down in that general vicinity. Now, that's not how you revitalize a community, when people are petrified and they're trying to move out of the community to avoid all the crime that's taking place. So I look forward to meeting with the province and working towards that aim and objective.
Thank you, Counselor Twill. Counselor Duran, second time.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Thank you, Counselor Ramsey. I think I'm back to a monthly question. Again, I'm asking about the 15 or so derelict properties. I've asked you the last three months in a row. We were so quick to push for one on University Avenue, and I see in the notes we're back looking for a progress report on it. I drove around by, you know, a property in your area. You know, the grass hasn't been cut in a long time. There's animals flying through the windows. Nothing's done with that for the last 30 years. I go down to Queen Street, that building in particular, the wall is caving in. There's no mention of any progress on these other 14 buildings that we're supposed to be looking at one a month for the next 15 months. We're back here three months later, and not a question, you know, I get an explanation in the minutes, but there's no progress on it. I mean, these buildings have been derelict a long, long time. So what's it going to take to move forward and get this stuff cleaned up? I mean, you sat here and you said, we're going to have a place once a month for 15 months, and we have no information here. You know, I'm asking to get the list out to council, get a progress report, what one you feel is the worst one, you know, in your ward or in another ward, and get some progress on it. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Ramsey?
Yes, sir. As I stated before, I went back on YouTube July 10th, and it was other councillors that stayed at once a month, but I didn't stake that because I went back and followed that. But there was a list. I talked to the bylaw officer again. They're all complaint-driven, and if there's nobody found any issues with the bylaw officer, like, he's just not going to go. And I rained off some names there last month by, for example, one on Nassau Street where him and the fire marshal went up to it, but the owner said, sir, we're working on the inside of it, and we're doing it all over. So that was pulled from the sheet. There's, I went down to the planning board last week just to check up on things. I believe there's one or two that applied for a demolition permit so far, and so we are working around it. But I just take my leave from the bylaw officer, and I will be checking with them the first of the week again. Thank you.
Counselor Ramsey, can you get an email off to Counselor Duran? Because Counselor Duran, you're up to twice. I have, we have to move on, but can you, like, he keeps bringing it up.
Yes, I will. Yes, I will.
Can you please?
Not a problem, Counselor Duran.
And I would suggest, if you could, see it to all members of council?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Counselor Beck?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, on that note, I think the clarifying, it got, well, illustrated by your CAO the last meeting, that the thing to keep in mind is that this is a very fluid process, and there are changing, the list isn't stagnant, it's always at various levels of being dealt with. So I think that's important to keep in mind, that it involves conversations, it involves processes, and that process change and evolves over the course of time. So we may have something this month, it may change the next month, could change next week. So I think that's an important part to keep in mind with any of these properties that we are, that we become aware of and that we deal with on a regular basis. Thank you.
Counselor Mertart, second time.
Oh, yes, right. Thank you.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I'm keeping track.
Thank you, your worship.
Your name's sprayed on my list here.
You are keeping track, for sure. Just to clarify, I think it was indicated by the chair that in order for a property to be identified, it needs to come through a complaint process? Is that my understanding?
Yes, it is.
So the city can't identify a property on its own and determine that it is derelict, unsafe? It has to come from a particular citizen complaint? Is that correct?
Well, that's something that we just discussed, Counselor Mertart, at our last meeting there, probably two weeks ago. And I think it was brought up by Counselor Beck, saying, like, can we almost do that ourselves? So that's going to be something that we're going to have to start looking at, starting the first of the week there, like, when I'm around. And we got a meeting in two weeks' time, so that's going to be on the agenda for sure.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, there certainly are very obvious.
Oh, no, there is a lot of properties. Yes, there is.
Well, there's certainly a lot of obvious properties. I don't know if we have the manpower to be driving through the city, finding every single property, but there are a number of very obvious ones that have been in the city for a number of years that I believe, you know, are in question, and that we could be looking at actioning on behalf of the city, not on behalf of a citizen complaint, if that was the mechanism. So I think we need to revisit that, if that is, in fact, the criteria. I do, as Counselor Beck indicated, there is a number of, you know, ebbs and flows when it comes to these properties, and I think it would be helpful if we were able to get somewhat of an update, a monthly update, as to how the tides are changing on some of these properties. As I indicated, I think some indicated that there are demolition permits that are already being issued, there's some that are being fixed up, there are some that are at various stages. But there are some that are no action, are very stagnant. So I think those are the ones that we need to be addressing where there is no action going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mertart, Counselor Bernard.
I agree 100% sir, and I believe the police chief is probably taking notes on that right now, and we'll have, that'll be on our agenda for two weeks' time, I guess.
Counselor Bernard, and then Counselor McLeer.
Thank you, your worship. Counselor Ramsey, when this first came to us, and tell me if I'm wrong, of all the properties that are on the list, how many of them did the building inspector actually inspect and deemed it structurally unsound and recommended to be taken down right away?
Good question. I do not have an answer for that, because I just took over this portfolio about six months ago, and that was it. I didn't, I don't have an answer for that, but I will certainly get it for you.
Okay.
Yeah, I think sometimes.
Go ahead, go ahead. Second time. Yep, go ahead.
Sometimes I wonder if we're not confused with the unsightly bylaw versus building inspector going in and telling us that it's structurally unsound?
Right.
And it needs to come down right away. I think that's why, the one that we talked about in here, that was why we voted, the way we voted, because you have a building inspector gone through, went through the building, seen it structurally unsound. So the recommendation was to take it down right away.
Yeah. No, I think what Counselor Duran has been asking for the last three months is just give me the list and tell me where the progress is, correct? Okay.
Correct.
Counselor.
I want to ask a point of order.
Yep. Get up, get up in the point of order.
So we have a meeting here. We have 10 questions, so you're only allowed to speak twice, but isn't that to the one question? Like, it doesn't seem fair, why are we here? Like, again, we're on the unsightly bylaw or property. We talked about drugs before, so you say no, the second time. So what if five different questions come up? You're just going to sit here like a mute until?
No, no.
Okay, I got one question?
No, no. It's, the report was given, and the procedural bylaw says you can get up twice, five minutes, two minutes. It's the same with the motions. This is to expedite, or at least make our meetings more efficient, rather than going for three hours, four hours? That's what we're doing here, Counselor Duran. You should know that.
Well, I understand, but it just doesn't seem fair that you're only allowed to speak twice, but it should be to one issue. Can I get a legal opinion on that?
We'll get a legal opinion, not right now, but we'll get a legal opinion on that, on the procedural bylaw.
That'd be great.
And we should be looking at more than three-hour meetings every time.
Well, no. I mean, you have something like police or fire. You have a lot of issues. You can't just be, okay, I'm just going to comment on one thing at the first, and then I'm done, done.
That's why you prepare your questions beforehand, so you can give two or three questions in your first time up or your second time up.
But just like I said, something like Counselor Bernard raises a point that I think I could comment.
Right.
But no, it's too bad.
Yeah, well, you'll have the opportunity, but we'll also look at Public Works, because Public Works is one of those departments that gets lots of questions, parks and recreation so, and planning. Let's, like, if we open it up, three, four-hour meetings, I'm just saying, I'm looking at the procedural bylaw. We'll ask legal to say, does the one twice speak into a resolution, or speak into a report? Does that respect our procedural bylaw? That's what we'll find out.
Perfect.
Counselor McCabe?
I kind of tend to agree. I think that when this resolution's read, it allows people to get up and have another question to that, which would allow Counselor Duran to speak. But I think that my interpretation would be, I agree that you have two times per issue, and I'm interested for the legal. I think it should be able to speak to.
I know, Counselor McCabe, that some meetings, we've been here three hours, some councillors have just said, look, I'm done, I want to go. We're looking at time-wise. We can spend five, I don't mind standing here for five hours. I'll stay here for five. I know you do. So if you open it for one, you open it for all. We have a resolution. We have a resolution to put on the floor?
Yes, there's one resolution, your worship. And just as a final note, I will be sitting down with the chief and the bylaw officer the first of next week, and we'll be trying to get answers for all of council, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Please read it out, please. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Protective and Emergency Services Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor Ramsey, seconded by Counselor Beck. Be it resolved that the Public Works manager be authorized to cut grass, remove any trees, garbage, and any other materials or debris, dangerous or otherwise, clean up and properly dispose of the same at the owner's expense at the following properties located at 63 Hutchison Court, PID 696880. Warning posted on June 22nd, 2023. Pictures taken. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken. 16 Hutchison Court, PID 625079. Warning posted on September 8th, 2023. Pictures taken. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken. 247 Mount Edward Road, PID 390625. Warning posted on August 21st, 2023. Pictures taken. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken. 231 Bradley Point Road, PID 623090. Warning posted on September 8th, 2023. Pictures taken. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken. In accordance with the terms of the dangerous, hazardous, and unsightly bylaw of the City of Charlottetown.
Resolution was read. Any questions? Concerns? Okay. Question called? Oh, Counselor Bernard? Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, you're looking at some of these dates, June 22nd, September 8th, August 21st. Is there anything that we've been working on to try and speed these up some? I mean, these are issues that were going on in the summer, and we haven't resolved them yet, and now we're in the fall. I thought there was a process we're working on to try and speed this up.
I can answer that, your worship.
Counselor Ramsey?
Years ago, when Counselor Duran and I were both on police and fire, we brought this up, probably five or six years ago, of why we have to wait so long, sometimes it's six weeks, sometimes it's eight weeks. I've been in conversation with our CAO and with their police chief and that, and I think there has to be a bylaw change, does it, and then it has to be approved by the province. Now, that's what I'm getting at of it. But it's crazy how you got to wait so long, Counselor Bernard. I agree with you 100%, because if, by the time it gets to council, some of these things are six weeks, so the summer's near over. So that's my two cents, Chris.
Second question?
Thank you, Counselor Ramsey. But I thought that we dealt with this, and it was going back to your committee, there was a change made that, once the bylaw officer wrote this up and it came to council, that it was open for approximately 60 to 90 days to be dealt with. And it didn't have to wait. Like, the first one, June 22nd, that's four months.
Yes.
So there must be a faster process than that.
And maybe the CAO can answer that, your worship?
C.O.L.?
Thank you, your worship, and through to Counselor Bernard. Yes, it was agreed that a change needs to be made. The change needs to be made to the bylaw. It's on our list. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of bylaw writing resources right now, so that's what the slowdown has been. So it's on the list to get it done. The goal is to make it that these things don't have to come to council. That's what the change to the bylaw will be. So it's on the list, it's noted, and it will get done soon. Thank you.
And it would fall under the summary proceedings bylaw, correct?
Right. Right. And, your worship, one more thing, and that's what we're trying to get it out of our hands, because if the bylaw officer goes through a certain property, like, he, well, it probably takes him four weeks, you know, to get it back to council and all that, but if he has the power, it'll probably get, it'll probably get done a lot quicker.
Question called?
We hope. No, your question called.
Question called. Okay, all those in favor? Counselor Ramsey, yea or nay?
Yea.
Okay. Ten zero. Can we now go on to Counselor McKinnon? Are you next in line? Okay. I'm just going down to... Thank you, chief. Chief? Counselor McKinnon?
Thank you, your worship. Economic Tourism and Cultural Development, we met on September 20th. The Arts Advisory Board met on September 14th, and minutes of both meetings are included in your package. There's three resolutions for your consideration, and I'm going to begin by offering a few departmental highlights since last meeting. Staff recently responded to a call for applications to the federal government's Can Export Community Investments Foreign Direct Investment Fund. Departmental staff have been in the move with several attraction and professional development missions, including the Communities in Bloom Symposium and Awards, Economic Developers Association of Canada Conference, International Festivals and Events Association Convention and Expo, Creative City Summit, and Spohawk Sport Tourism Summit. The city is also fresh off hosting a highly successful Canadian Capital Cities Organization Conference. Participants applauded the efforts of the municipality for developing an incredibly strong program. Mayor Brown, Deputy Mayor Yankoff, Counselor Beck, and departmental staff attended the three-day event. The last two weeks also brought three incredible, highly successful cultural events to the city's downtown core. Residents and visitors were treated to the inaugural Moonlight Bazaar, the annual staple firm day in the city, and the third edition of Street Feast, which took place this past weekend. All three events were free to attend and important contributors to the city's fall tourism season and annual cultural offerings. The next couple of weeks will see two international sporting events with the PEI Marathon with the PEI marathon taking place this weekend and the World Under 17 Hockey Challenge running November 2nd to the 11th. And the city will once again recognize strong contributors to Charlottetown's cultural industry through the Biennial Arts and Culture Awards, which take place October 25th at Trailside Music Hall. Special thanks to the Arts Advisory Board for their leadership on this file. The manager of economic tourism is online to answer any questions that I'm not able to, and Doug is also here to answer questions. Thank you.
Okay, deputy mayor Yankoff, councillor Twill next.
Thank you, and thank you councillor McKinnon for your report. I just wanted to give a shout out to the staff and their events partners on that brand new event we did this year, Moonlight Bazaar, you know, for the council, for the area. It was just fantastic to see culture artisans, newcomers, food vendors, performers all coming together. So just a big kudos to the staff here at the events team, Wayne and his team for that. And also just wanted to comment that I did attend the Canadian Capital Cities Conference here, and it was a great opportunity for other capital cities to get together and talk about best practice and struggles that we're all having, and just again, another shout out to your team, so thank you for that.
Councillor Twill.
Thank you for your report councillor McKinnon. I've been reading some of the debates in the House of Commons and some of the discussions regarding the carbon tax for gasoline and home fuel. And there seems to be a change in mindset where I think the powers may be, federal government level, are starting to realize that carbon tax is becoming very problematic, and carbon tax on heating fuel is very problematic. Now, we're all in favor of trying to eliminate gas emissions, everyone is. But I think strategy should be, you try to incentivize people and give them programs and incentives that they can explore and utilize. For example, like all the heat pumps and, you know, the programs that we've introduced here in the last two or three years here at City Hall. We've done some great things when it comes to helping people with trying to deal with the cost of heating oil. But it's gotten to a point now, and you look at it from an economic perspective and a tourism perspective, it's cost a lot of money for people that want to travel, people that want to go to work every day, people that use their vehicles for work, it could be a plumber, it could be a carpenter. You could be wanting to go to Nova Scotia to visit your son and daughter, attending university, whatever the case may be. So I would like to discuss that further at our economic development meeting, and you know, there's been challenges now. You know, you have the federal government challenging the provincial government to eliminate the sales tax on new rentals that are being constructed. So why not tap into that debate now on gasoline and heating fuel? Because the members of parliament, regardless of what side of the fence you're on, are discussing it at Wells, and they're looking at rebates and what can we do to try to offset the cost? Maybe we need to cut down on some of that or eliminate that carbon tax and let people have a chance to live, as opposed to, you know, having to be penalized and punished by adding more taxes and taxes. Province got carbon tax, the federal government has carbon tax. We need to have those discussions at the grassroots level. And maybe we can be the agents of change to say to the federal government and the province, look, there's other ways, there's other ways to combat gas emissions and other incentives, as opposed to, you know, just constantly raising taxes on fuel and oil, because that's not fair to people that are living on a fixed income. And it's not fair to people that have to use those necessities to be able to work, commute back and forth. And it's not fair to the father and mother that has to take their son to hockey or to soccer practice or whatever the case may be. So I'd like to have those discussions at the municipal level, councillor McKinnon. And like I said, maybe we can be the agents of change at the municipal level. Thank you.
Councillor McKinnon?
Thank you councillor Twill. No, definitely at our next committee, we're open for discussions, and if you have any solutions that would help this out, bring them to the meeting, but I think the province is the one setting the taxes here, not municipal government. But we'll discuss that at our meeting, the next economic development meeting.
Okay councillor Twill, second time.
Yes, if the province does set the tax rate, I understand that, so does the federal government, they do in conjunction with one another. But nonetheless, we can discuss it and maybe pass a resolution to council and send that off to the premier's office and the member of parliament and the PMO's office to say, look, you know, particularly here in Atlantic Canada, and I'm hearing the discussions, I'm reading the discussions, it's extremely hard for, you know, rural Canadians in Atlantic Canada, it's also hard for urban Canadians in Atlantic Canada. So it's just too much, and people are living in fear. We have no idea how people are living when it comes to trying to keep themselves warm, and they're begrudging moving into the winter months, and maybe this can help by eliminating these taxes. We're, there's just too many taxes, and we need to explore those opportunities.
Thank you, thank you councillor. You have a couple of resolutions there, sir?
Thank you, your worship, Economic Tourism and Cultural Development Committee Resolution Number One, moved by councillor McKinnon, moved by councillor, or seconded by councillor Macleer. Be it resolved that council endorse entering into a three year agreement with local intel to provide access to economic development marketing tools at a cost of $6,900 plus HST per year, and that the first year be expensed out of the 2023-2024 Economic Development Operational Budget. And further that, the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Councillor Dron.
Thank you mayor Brown, thank you councillor McKinnon. I'm just wondering, I didn't see anywhere, did we go out to tender on this, or is this a sole source to this one this one company that can do what we're looking for, or has everybody been able to get a crack at this? Thank you.
Councillor McKinnon?
Thank you for your question councillor Dron, I'm going to deflect that over to manager Wayne Long.
Mr. Long?
Thank you, your worship, through the chair. As indicated in the report, staff have conducted evidence based research with respect to these marketing tools. We went out and received quotes from companies who have professional services within this space and did a thorough evaluation with respect to our needs and the municipality. And so we had various quotes that we used as part of this process. There was not an RFP process given the value of the envelope.
Yes, it's $6,900, correct? Yeah. Yeah. Good. Question? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Councillor Ramsay, yea or nay?
In favor.
Councillor Dron, yea or nay? No? Okay, nine one. Okay, we have another resolution?
Economic Tourism and Cultural.
Just before we do that, so deputy mayor Yankoff has stepped in for these two, thank you.
Economic Tourism and Cultural Development Committee Resolution Number Two, moved by councillor McKinnon, seconded by councillor Macleer. Be it resolved that council endorse a one time $20,000 grant for the Guild, and that the funds be allocated from the 2023-2024 Operating Budget, which includes $500,000 for new external grants. And further that, the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay, councillor McTard.
Thank you, your worship, to the chair, can we confirm if the, I believe the Guild was involved in the first, I'll call it the first round of allocation of funds through that application process that we had for that $500,000 grant program.
Councillor McKinnon?
Councillor McKinnon.
Can you sit down there councillor McTard? He's got the floor. He's got the floor, okay. Hey councillor McKinnon?
Thank you councillor McTard for your question, yes, they were involved in the first round, as you call it, approvals that were given out.
Okay. Do you want to follow up councillor McTard? No, you can go up, is it all right, he can go? Yeah, go ahead.
I should have known to ask several questions in my first question. So to answer that.
I can stay here longer.
I'm fine being here for the three hours, that's quite all right. I guess my question then, do we recall how much that was? I went back to try to find it, and I wasn't able to come up with it, but nonetheless, I guess what I'm looking here is, so they're coming back for a second application for an additional 20,000? And if so, does it, you know, again, meet the criteria, or is it something that continues throughout the year, you know, to utilize that application process? Because if I remember, when we went through this, we had a lot of debate as to how people would utilize this pool of money. So I'm curious to know, like, they're looking for another 20,000 on top of what was the original amount?
Fifty-five, forty-four.
Fifty-five, forty, it was in the report there, yeah, fifty-five, forty. Yeah, yeah, okay, great, thank you.
Can we just let councillor McKinnon answer that, councillor McKinnon? Or do you got Doug there? I just want to get it on the public record, that's why. Councillor McKinnon?
Thank you councillor McTard for that question, and through the manager, I'm going to pass this over to Doug for explanation of those expenses.
Okay, Mr. Demay.
Thank you councillor. Yes, so this did come forward with our grant requests that were submitted earlier this year. The Guild received $55,000 operating grant, which is approved and budgeted. They had asked for, they also received $24,000 in grant in lieu of taxes. They had asked for 25,000 at that time, and they were given 4,840 as a one time grant that was commensurate with provincial CPI at the time as well. So this is a 20,000 additional one time grant under consideration. And I should also add that as per the report, this is considered not a reconsideration, but a new request based on additional information that has come to light, which is outlined in the report.
Okay, councillor Dron.
Mayor Brown, thank you councillor McKinnon. Like, I know the first time it came through finance, now it's coming back a different way. So then, you know, we're looking at $103,977 for the grant. And the new information is they had an HR problem or something like that, I understand, but it's always coming back to us. I know we don't have the extra money, but I'm wondering why it didn't come in under finance, for one thing, and why, it says they're going to look for government funding, but if they get it from us, are they going to look for government funding? What has the government put into this request? You know, or is it just easy to come to us? Like, you know, when I see this, that's a lot of money for one business, so I can't support it. Thank you.
But councillor Dron, do you want to defer it back to finance? Is that what you're saying? Do you want to clarify what you're saying? Go ahead.
Well, it's the process, you know, how do you come to finance? We sit there, we decide, we pass it up to council, we voted on it, and then it comes back, you come around with more information, you go through a different department, looking for the same amount of money. So, you know, to me, is there not a policy and a procedure to go through finance for this? Or do you just tap into whatever department will give you the money? That's my question. If you're looking, you know, it says we already accessed the grant money through the finance committee or department, but yet you're going through a different committee. I just don't think that's following the flow of what the grants program is, or does every department have access to it?
Okay, councillor McCabe.
I think I asked this question earlier too councillor Dron, and I think what I understand is because we had $500,000 approved at budget time for our grants, but we didn't use all that $500,000, it didn't have to come back through finance, because technically, I guess the money would still be approved based on our budget last time. My concern is, we made a decision, we provided people with money, and they didn't, they weren't, that wasn't enough, and now we're back looking for more money. And I don't know if we have a process in place for that, I know we're working on the new procurement or grant policy, we approved that through, and I'm not sure, I'd have to go back and look more clearly if it has anything where you can come back a second and third time looking for more money. I guess they have a right to, but I guess when you look at what we've already granted to both the next two resolutions we're going to look at, there were other people coming looking for money that we only gave a set amount to too. So why is it fair that we're now reconsidering for two when we only, you know, when we didn't give other people what they were needing or asking for at the same time? So for me, I'm going to have a hard time giving more money until we have something better in place too, and maybe with our new budget year coming, we can look at clarifying that a little bit more.
Councillor Twill and councillor Bernard.
As I recall, and maybe councillor Macleer can verify, so I can recall this issue was going to be forwarded on to the finance committee, along with the second issue, that the finance committee would deliberate and have this discussion and to see if it meets a threshold, and then come to council as a recommendation. So obviously, no, I guess it didn't happen. So I will move a deferral that it's sent to the finance committee. And I think, you know, we've got to be careful here, because it does, it does create a dangerous precedent in that when an organization, you know, receives X amount of dollars from the taxpayers, and then, well, jeez, you know, we think there's more money there, and we're going to go back and ask again. It does create a dangerous precedent, it really does. And what's to stop other organizations, or new organizations for that matter, that haven't received any grants or any financial incentives from the city of Charlottetown to come back? So basically, the process, it's just an evolving, moving target, where you can keep coming back and asking for money. Now, I understand the significance of the Arts Guild and what it does, it plays a critical role in our tourism trade for downtown Charlottetown. And there might be other opportunities. Now councillor Dron talked about the federal government, and, or not the federal, the provincial government, to see what their contribution is. And I think that should be one of the prerequisites before we even entertain the thought. Then the other thing that should be explored is, since it is, you know, a catalyst for tourism here in the city of Charlottetown, have they looked at the Atlantic Opportunities Agency, ACOA, to see what opportunities are there? So I think that, you know, it's always easy to come back to the city of Charlottetown. It's always easy to come back to the city of Charlottetown, but, you know, I think they need to explore opportunities like the Atlantic Opportunities Agency, which was created back in 1984 for businesses, startup businesses and industries here in Atlantic Canada. And it's, I thought it was a good program, so, you know, maybe we can encourage them to explore their opportunities as well.
You're moving a deferral.
I will move a deferral.
I need a second. Councillor Dron has moved, no, councillor Twill has moved the deferral, seconded by councillor Twill, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. So the deferral is on the floor, you speak to the deferral, councillor Bernard.
Thank you, your worship, I just wonder, you know, usually during budget time, we deal with a lot of different grants through finance, but after the budget's completed, there's different committees or departments that have grants in their budget. I just wonder if this one, economic development, doesn't have that grant money in their budget? And that's why that they're bringing forward this request, it's already in their budget? So for me, I don't know if you want to defer it, I think you want to find out where the budget is. If it's finance, then it should go back to finance, if it's economic development, that's why they're asking for it.
Deferral's on the floor.
Go to your worship.
Yes. Councillor Ramsay?
Yes, thank you, is this just a one time deal?
Yes, thank you. Is this just a one-time deal, or this extra 20,000? I'm just, I was breaking up there. I couldn't hear.
Yeah. Yeah. No, Counselor Ramsey, it's an additional request. It's a repeat request that was made during the budget deliberation, and now it's coming back.
Okay.
So the deferral is to defer it to finance, correct? Okay. Question?
Question called.
Question on the floor. Okay. Who's in favor of the deferral? Please raise your hand. Okay. Counselor Ramsey, yea or nay?
Yes.
Yes. Those against the deferral? Okay, five, four. So deferral, it goes to, back to finance?
Yes.
And could I just ask, just before, since this is the same as the next one, should we not defer that also back?
Absolutely.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Or do you want to vote on it separately? On this?
On this issue?
Well, the resolution's passed for the deferral.
But we're going to talk about the second one, so I'll ask it under that one.
Okay, you want to, we'll go to the third one. Okay.
Before we defer, yeah, once you read it.
Yeah, we're going to read it out. So those against were, okay. Okay, just one second. Beck. Okay, just one second, guys. And, okay, can you read the next one?
Thank you, your worship.
CAO Eleanor?
Economic Tourism and Cultural Development Committee Resolution Number Three, moved by Counselor McKinnon, seconded by Counselor MacLeir. Be it resolved that council endorse a $20,000 grant for the Island Theater Festival in the current fiscal, with consideration of funding for two subsequent being considered separately as part of the 2024-2025 and 2025-2026 budget processes, and that this year's funding be allocated from the 2023-2024 operating budget, which includes $500,000 for new external grants, and further that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay, Counselor Twill, are you moving it deferred?
Yes, like the previous resolution, I will move a deferral, same logic, same rationale to the Finance Committee, encouraging this respective organization to also explore the opportunities with the provincial government, and because it's a big part of the tourism and tourism and people that come to see Anne and Gilbert, it's a great production for the organizers, to also explore the opportunities with the Atlantic Opportunities Agency. Again, created in 1984, to help with businesses of this nature. And who knows, maybe they'll be able to receive additional funding to add additional amenities to their production. Thank you.
Counselor Bernard?
Is there clarification from the Finance Manager or the Chair? The 500,000 that we talk about here, whose budget is it in? Finance, Economic Development, whose budget is it in? Give me a clarification, please.
It's coming from the $500,000 that was left over from grants, so that's where it's coming from.
So whose budget is it in?
It's in finance.
Okay, so this should go to finance.
Yeah, it's in finance. Counselor McCabe? Did you, Counselor Beck, did you want to say?
No.
Okay, Counselor McCabe, go.
Don't, don't.
Go, go.
Don't make a second there for your referral.
Yes, it's Counselor Dran. Did you not second it? Yeah.
Yeah, I just didn't think we had that.
Yeah, no. Moved by Counselor Twill, seconded by Counselor Dran. Same, thank you for clarifying that. Counselor McCabe, sorry.
So even though, so every time now, because I'm just wanting to make sure, so the money, because we approved the money, we approved a $500,000 budget at budget time for grants. So this new request is vetted through Economic Development, but has to come back, even though the money's approved in finance already? Is that, and then we have to recommend whether or not we think this is worthy to come to council as part of that committee? Is that the process?
Yeah. Yeah, it's going back to finance, because that's what we set up, was the $500,000 for grants.
Okay, no, I just wanted to make sure I'm following the process.
Counselor Matar?
Thank you, your worship. So just to clarify further, so the requests that come in for these two grants did not go through finance, therefore, did they go through the grant process that we have in finance?
Yes, they did.
They did, but they didn't get approved through finance?
Correct, correct.
So they still could come down through finance, be vetted through the criteria that needs to be met, and can be determined if there's merit to proceed or not, and then come back to council?
Correct.
So that's what we're deferring. I just want to verify, that's what I'm agreeing to, deferring, to go back through that process. And we could see these again coming through?
Yeah, from finance.
For that clarification.
Question?
Question called.
Questions called. All those in favor, please. On the deferral, for number Economic Tourism and Cultural Development, number three. All those in favor of the deferral, please raise your hand. Okay, counselors, okay, Counselor Twill, Dran, McKinnon, Bernard, Matar, Ramsey, Counselor Ramsey, yea or nay?
Oh, yeah, my hand's up. Can't you see it?
Yeah, I can see it. Yeah, thank you. All those against, please raise your hand.
Yes, I'm in favor.
Okay, counselors, okay, Beck and MacLeir contrary. Okay. So it's six, three. Counselors McCabe. Is she out there? Okay. Do you have another resolution? Nope. That's it? Okay, Wayne, Counselor Ramsey, thank you. Doug, thank you very much. Okay, so we're going back to our agenda. And the first, well, it's 6.2, Planning and Heritage, and it's Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, Chair.
Thank you, thank you, your worship. So the Planning and Heritage Committee met on September 20th and October the 3rd. The minutes and reports are in your package. The Planning Board met on October the 3rd. Reports and minutes are also in your package. The Heritage Board met on September 25th. The reports and minutes are in your package. And Design Review Board did not meet this month. The Affordable Housing Advisory Committee met on September 7th, and again, the minutes are included in your package. So also, for just for information purposes, you will see in your package a listing of permit applications during the past month, and they're included in your package for your review. So this evening, we have one resolution from the Heritage Board for your review. We have a resolution from the Planning and Heritage Committee for your review. We have four resolutions from the Planning Board, and we have two first readings. And I will point out that Resolution Number One in your four resolutions from Planning Board has been replaced. I'm sure you would have received it late in the afternoon. There was just a typo in Resolution Number One for that particular one. So if anyone has any questions, I will do my best to answer. Thank you.
Counselor Twill?
Thank you for your report, Counselor Alana. As you know, when we're dealing with resolutions, we're always reminded by staff that it's a land use issue. And that's what we should be concentrating on. And lots of times, we're getting into, I guess, social issues in the respective neighborhoods and communities, safety issues, crime that are taking place in the communities. One of the issues that keep coming up, and I want to try to approach this from a land use perspective, is drug paraphernalia that seems to end up in our sports fields, our parks, heritage squares in public places, private businesses, the front of their properties, the back of their properties. And some neighborhoods and communities are becoming infested with drug paraphernalia. So from a land use perspective, Counselor Alana, I was wondering if you could take this back to your committee to see if we can formulate a plan to see what can be done to discourage drug paraphernalia from showing up in these particular public venues, because, again, it speaks to not feeling safe in your community, not feeling safe in your neighborhood, not feeling safe on your front doorstep, not feeling safe in your backyard, not feeling safe on the school grounds, and not feeling safe, it could be a church property as well. I'm reading emails to that extent as well. So there's got to be a way where we can be proactive and initiate the type of change that's truly required to try to eliminate or try to discourage drug paraphernalia from showing up in all of the venues that I've just mentioned. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, to see if we can approach it from, you know, a land use and from a planning perspective. So I wanted to bring that up.
Okay. Deputy? Just one second, deputy. Go ahead.
Sure. Thank you, Counselor Twill. And in terms of planning and heritage files and reports, they usually take an approach of land use and community impact. They also, when the planners are putting together their reports, they have to circulate these reports through the various committees within the city. So I will take back your suggestions to our next meeting. I dare say it will fall under some of the other committees as well. But with our official plan being looked at, it's a good opportunity for us to align that with our new official plan, which will then prompt the changes towards zoning and development by law. So thank you.
Counselor Matar?
Thank you, your worship. To the Chair, on September 25th, council passed a resolution for the temporary variance for the shelter on Park Street, which was under a number of conditions that needed to be met by, I believe, by the time the current application expires. And if I understand correctly, that may expire, be set to expire on October 13th. I can stand to be corrected. So in knowing that, my question is, you know, where are we with that, do we have an update on that application and any further work towards meeting those terms and conditions for the issuance of the permit? You know, in particularly, there was discussion around the fire safety measures, fire extinguishers, or sorry, the sprinkler system primarily, and also a number of other conditions. You know, as the counselor for Ward Two, I'm certainly getting lots of questions regarding to where that is in the process. If there is an application that is set to expire on the 13th, will another one be issued upon that? Or is there any leniencies towards that based on the terms and conditions of that application? Thank you, Chair.
Deputy Mayor Yankoff?
Thank you for your question, Counselor Matar. So on September 25th, council did their job, which was, we did not approve the recommendation of, I guess we approved this one, with the terms and conditions that have to be met by October 13th. So now that's over to staff to see whether or not those conditions have been met yet. So with that being said, I will ask one of our two managers to address the question and see where we are at with the conditions that were outlined in that resolution. Thank you.
David or Donna?
Sure, your worship, I can certainly field that question. So to address Counselor Matar's question on outstanding conditions, currently, we don't have any news that any of those outstanding conditions have been met at the current time. So again, the applicants have until October 13th to satisfy lest the use can't move forward if those conditions are not met as per the approval that was provided.
And that, if that doesn't happen, that could mean the closure of that facility?
Your worship, that is entirely correct.
Okay. Okay. Counselor Twill?
Thank you for your response to my first inquiry, Counselor Alana. My second is, we've heard a lot about, over the last number of months, what is the best course of action when it comes to drug rehabilitation? And there's many different philosophies, many different programs, many different approaches to drug rehabilitation. And I believe there was a campus that was illustrated back two or three years ago, out at the Queen Elizabeth Hospital campus, where they talked about some type of a medical clinic. And I'm not sure where the provincial government is on this particular issue. I mean, they went to great lengths, they brought in consultants, they made presentations, we were all there. It was held at the Rod Royalty Inn. I thought it was a pretty good plan. I was in favor of that plan. And then for some reason, that plan seemed to disintegrate or ended up in the shredder on file 13, not really sure. But again, from a planning perspective and being truly proactive, a lot of people in this community that I've talked to over the last number of weeks are in favor of clinical treatment, having the very best of the amenities, a medical facility, doctors that have the credentials and the qualifications to help people that are seeking the help, that need the help, so that they can truly get the type of medical service from the professionals. So they can have that treatment, go through the different phases, go through the necessary steps that are truly required. And then that will truly help them be reintegrated into the community. So maybe we need to go back to the province, and you went to great lengths to showcase a plan to city council, and where is that plan? And a lot of people that I've talked to want to know where that plan is. So why not, again, from a planning perspective, let's dust off that plan, let's meet with the province, find out where they're at. You made a commitment, are you going to fulfill the commitment? Are you going to come in with these Band-Aid solutions, which I don't see a majority of the residents in this community, in this city, truly in favor of? So I'd be willing to work with you on that particular, on that initiative and that proposal. So I think we need to start pushing the province on some of the commitments that they made with respect to the medical facilities that they outlined and we approved as a council. Thank you.
Just, deputy, did you receive the letter from Wayne Walker? It says here, Philip Brown, members of council, in regards to Mental Health and Addictions Capital Redevelopment Open House. It's going on Thursday, October 11th. The project management team for the Mental Health and Addictions Capital Redevelopment Project is planning a community open house this Thursday.
I understand that. I understand, Mr. McLeir, but here's what happens. They showcase a plan, and then it's two or three years later, well, we're going to dust it off again, and we're going to showcase again because of the heat that's been taking place in the community, because council rejected on a seven-three vote, the injection site at the end of Park Street and Beet Street, because of feedback that we've received from a number of public meetings that clearly demonstrated residents were not in favor of that approach, are not in favor of facilities of that magnitude in their respective neighborhoods and communities, and rightly so. So I understand, I got that, too. But I did recall attending that meeting at the Rod Royalty Inn three years ago, so it's not enough to say we're going to have an open house and let's look at it, and then come back three and five years from now. We've really got to start forcing the envelope.
Yep. No, I think they're going into the bond market to borrow the money. Counsel, deputy?
Thank you, Counselor Twill. I do think the planning staff does have an update on that. That's still an open file with the planning staff. I'm not sure if it's appropriate for me to put them on the spot. If they don't have an update today, I can certainly take it back to committee and bring you back a report after that. But if you do have any update, feel free to share it if it's appropriate. Thank you.
David, Donna, any update on it, please? I know, they're just going to them first.
Your worship, through your worship, to address Counselor Twill's question, staff have been in consultation in the past few weeks with the province on an updated concept, which does look a little bit different from what was previously seen by council in the past. That's where I'll stop, because there are some relatively confidential negotiations and discussions going on between staff and provincials, and municipal staff and provincial staff on that updated concept. So I'll just leave it at that for now.
Okay. Counselor Matar?
Thank you, your worship. To the Chair, I'd like to go back to my question on the Park Street Shelter variance application, set to expire on Friday, October 13th. So... So, I guess I want to understand what the expectation is, you know, at, you know, or end of day Friday, first thing Monday morning. Again, I'm not sure of the process. I'm not sure if it's up to the applicant to have reached out upon the resolution passing and then to begin working with city staff regarding how to move forward with that. It's only been a couple of weeks, but nonetheless, hearing here tonight, there has been no discussion or interaction or progress on that. So, that concerns me as to what Friday, October 13th will look like. And then, come the weekend, that is a shelter that is operational now. And it was indicated here a minute ago that there could be likely chance it could be asked to cease operations until the application is permitted or the permit is provided. I will be fielding many questions regarding this. I would like to know how to address that, those queries going forward and what the expectations are beyond that. Can somebody please provide me with some level of understanding or assurance as to what happens post-October 13th? Thank you.
Deputy Mayor? Deputy Mayor Yankoff?
Thank you, Councilor Matar, for your question. I think there's probably not a single counselor in this room tonight that isn't looking for the same answer. So, I do ask if we can have some sort of update for folks here in the room, as well as the residents, and also the residents that will be affected by the shelters if the province does not adhere to the conditions of the development agreement. So, if staff has any update on that, that would be really appreciated. Thank you.
David, Donna?
Sure. To follow up, Your Worship, Councilor Matar, if council provided an approval on the shelter subject to the conditions that were noted in our report, if those conditions aren't met by that time, time goes by, it would become, in my mind, an enforcement issue at that point in time. So, it would be in the city's hands whether to allow the use to continue or not if those conditions aren't satisfied. So, that's the best answer I can give at this point in time.
Thank you. Councilor McCabe?
Thank you, and thank you for your answer. And I think we were all very clear, and we continually questioned that night, because I think we were all in doubt that some of the conditions that we put in place were actually going to be met. But at the end of the day, we were reassured that if they weren't met, that the province had to take ownership of that. That was going to be their issue, unfortunately. They had a year from the first temporary variance to the second temporary variance, and if they've done nothing, really, that's not our issue. When we voted, we voted with the understanding that safety conditions, meeting National Fire Code, all those things would be in place. The second thing, it's just interesting, and I can say it now because it was kind of part of my public works report, but I know our manager and staff met with provincial people today down, looking at relocating entranceways and so that we could redirect users from going to Beach Street. And they're going to have a contractor come in and put fences up and gates up. And another example of our silos work at both levels of government, whether it's, you know, our staff not talking to our staff, their staff not talking to their staff. And here we are, making these decisions and acting like we all know what we're talking about when people are just working in their own direction. So, you know, if they're looking at putting fences and gates up, and they're looking at relocating their doorway, but they still haven't gotten their sprinkler system installed, I think they're a little bit ahead of themselves on that part. So, I'm not sure who's responsible to kind of communicate that, but, you know, they might not have anywhere to be if they don't have things in place in three days.
Okay. Do we have to go with a resolution? Start? Heritage first? I think that's the first one.
Your Worship, Planning and Heritage Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by Councilor McCabe. Be it resolved that the proposed short-term rental licensing bylaw...
We're doing the Heritage Board, or do you want to do planning?
That's the first one in order.
Okay. Sorry. Keep going. Sorry, but that, so, Councilor Beck, you're in, yeah, I just wanted, that's what I need to know.
Heritage Board was in order.
Yeah, that's all right. Go ahead. No, that's all right. Go right ahead, please. Just start over again.
Be it resolved that the proposed short-term rental licensing bylaw 2023 PH-STR-2-000 and the increase of the fee charge to the short-term rental applications from $50 to $175 to facilitate application processing and the provision of a license to the respective applicants be approved.
Okay. Councilor McCabe?
Thank you. So, as I sat, I sit on planning, I had a little bit of a chance to try and understand what we were discussing, and we had lots of great discussion at Planning Board about the licensing bylaw and how it kind of proceeded to reference to our summary proceedings bylaw, if I'm correct. In our summary proceedings bylaw, the last time this bylaw was updated was 2009. So, we're in 2023, and we're developing a really important new bylaw around short-term rentals in our city. And we are referencing a bylaw that's quite out of date, that I think really needs to take precedent before we start looking at adopting a new bylaw that's going to depend on a 2009 bylaw. I think we need to slow down. I'd like to put a motion to defer this short-term rental licensing bylaw until we, A, bring up our summary proceeding bylaw up to speed to make it make more sense, would be my first ask on that. And also, there was other pieces that I think we still need to do a better job. There was some communications piece, there were some things that we wanted to do prior to rolling out this. This is really important. We're one of the first cities in the country to roll out a short-term rental thing, and I'd really like to see it done properly rather than quickly, because we put timelines in place. So, I'd like to recommend that we defer this until we can get back and update our summary proceedings bylaw.
So, motion to defer. Need a seconder? Okay. So, Councilor Duran, you've moved, seconded?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to speak to the deferral?
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I just wonder why it's here. Like, if you're on the committee and, you know, it comes forward to this, I look at the price of $50 to $175. You know, it's hard for the mother and father or the grandparent trying to rent a spot for this. You know, I have a concern about that price. But, you know, if it's coming from the committee, I just wondered why we couldn't defer it. Like, you know, if it's not ready, why is it here? That's what I'm asking. So, that's why I'm deferring it, you know, second deferred.
No, no. Correct me if I'm wrong, David or Donna. We do have, we did amend the Zone and Development bylaw for short-term rentals last year. We gave a one-year grace. This is just a putting in place a process. Now, if we can't, you know, if we can't meet up with that process right away, it is ongoing because I think, Donna, if you want to, if, Madam Chair, maybe you want to clarify what the role is right now? Go ahead.
Sure. Thank you. I can, I can give a little bit of background, and then I may ask the managers to speak to it as well. Thank you, Councilor McCabe and Councilor Duran, for your questions. And His Worship is correct. The changes to the zoning and development bylaw have already been in place and are in, in fact, in place and expected for residents to adhere to. That took place, and that was, I believe, a nine-one vote a year and a half ago. So, last February, we brought forward a short-term rental licensing bylaw that just defined for you the process to which you get your short-term rental operation licensed. It doesn't, it doesn't talk about who can have one and who can't have one. That's in the zoning and development bylaw. This is a short-term rental licensing bylaw. And at the time, they felt it was necessary to bring the price up from $50 to $175 to align with the provincial licensing fees. I believe that's, that was the reason for the license, as well as it's a cost of increase of doing business as well. We are also in the process of recruiting and hiring a bylaw enforcement officer who will be, will be enforcing the various bylaws that fall under planning and heritage. And so, that being said, last February, the second reading was deferred to make changes because there were some things missing from the first kick at the can, if you will. So, it's back here today with those changes in place, and you will have gotten two copies in your package, one with the original from February and one today that was outlined in red, where you see where the corrections were made in that. Now, what Councilor McCabe is referring to is the enforcement piece, and we have been patiently waiting for quite a while for a summary proceedings bylaw. Now, we do have one. It's old. It started in 1996. It was last amended in 2009. So, it is outdated, and so therefore, our struggle is the enforcement piece. We can, we can enforce, but right now, our enforcement piece is going to court. We don't have, we don't have any teeth yet in our bylaw to, you know, to give somebody a fine if they're not adhering to a bylaw. So, that being said, the short-term rental licensing bylaw can still go forward with the enforcement mechanisms that we have that are existing in place right now, if council chooses to. However, if council feels that they want to defer it until this piece is completed, then that's council's decision tonight, and I will just look to our two managers to see if they have anything else they want to add to that. So, thank you.
Donna, I know you've been working on the file, Donna.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through Madam Chair. The department is actually in the process of updating the summary proceedings and enforcement bylaw at the moment. We have also written to the province to have them include short-term licensing in the, in section 227 of the Government Municipal Act, and this will put more teeth, sorry, into our enforcement process. So, we are actually working on it at the moment.
Councilor Matar, then Councilor McCabe. Councilor Matar?
Thank you, Your Worship. To the Chair, thank you for that update back from February, I believe it was, when we were last discussing this profile. I think I recall one of the discussions we had for deferral was on the licensing application and not meeting a number of safety concerns or addressing a number of safety concerns. Do I have that, is that correct, if I recall? A number of things from a fire and safety perspective. In reading the package and identifying the areas in red, I want to confirm that those were additions that were made as a result of the discussion that we had back in February to address those, those concerns that we had.
Deputy Mayor?
I believe all the concerns that were addressed last February have been met in the updates and changes to this licensing bylaw, and I'm getting the okay from Donna. So, yes, Councilor Matar, that is in fact correct.
Okay. Question on the deferral? Question? Go. Oh, Councilor McCabe, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I know you're working very hard, and I know that things take time, and I know that you're in the process. My point's not to be argumentative that I don't want to get this done. My point was to say, until we have those things in place, I just don't know why we're voting on a new bylaw that we just heard really isn't enforceable yet, and we're waiting for approval from both the province. I know you say it's enforceable, but it's that same process of going through the courts and doing whatever that we have to do. Like, it's not, I'm just finding it hard to see where it's clear, I guess. And if I'm finding it hard, after sitting through planning, sitting through council and having time, how are we going to educate people about this? But that's, maybe I'm just not comprehending.
Councilor Matar?
Thank you, to the Chair. Again, I believe, I remember very vividly saying, like, there were three components to this, and we were talking about using analogy of various pieces to this puzzle, and if we didn't have them all in place, why would we proceed with this? So, I think if we're still looking at, this is the second piece of the puzzle that maybe, and we still don't have the enforcement component. So, I think, again, we're just trying to piecemeal, to try to get as much of it in as possible, whereas we're, you know, try to get it in into a comprehensive package, which includes all of the components needed to offer the applications, the enforcement, et cetera, et cetera. So, I would support a deferral at this time as well.
Okay. Councilor Matar?
So, it's my understanding that the short-term rental licensing bylaw, the licensing bylaw that's in here, has nothing to do with the summary proceedings bylaw. Has nothing to do with it. This is...
This is the registration.
Right.
Yeah.
So, to me, if it has nothing to do with that, that's going to be updated. This has to be done anyway. So, we might as well move ahead and do it. That's my understanding.
Donna, approve the proposed short-term rental licensing bylaw and heritage, and the Planning and Heritage Committee recommends increase of the fee charged to process short-term rental application. This is an application, or is this the whole bylaw itself? I think that's what's being asked.
So, that's the fee to process the application. With the application, the applicants will get a license sticker and a registration certificate. So, that cost will cover those.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Yankoff?
I know I had that.
Okay. Okay. CAO Eleanor? Yeah, I know, I see her.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to offer a point of clarification here. So, this bylaw is about the licensing of short-term rentals, the process, the structure that it's within. The bylaw that was passed over a year ago, the change to the zoning and development bylaw to regulate short-term rentals, is still in full effect, and it can be enforced. So, delaying this licensing piece doesn't stop the city from being able to enforce illegal short-term rentals. The position that was referenced is the bylaw person who, we're in the process of advertising, should be able to hire this person soon. When this person starts with the municipality, they can start enforcement on illegal short-term rentals. The summary proceedings bylaw, the reason why we've been pursuing that is because we want to make enforcement easier by trying to tick it. But just like waste or anything else, we have the ability to enforce, and when this new bylaw person starts, that is the intent. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Yankoff?
Thank you. And I just wanted to just give a clarification too. When it comes to the licensing, the short-term rental licensing bylaw, no matter what the zoning and development bylaw says, so if somewhere down the road during the official plan and the implementation of the new official plan, which would prompt changes to the zoning and development bylaw, no matter what, where short-term rentals are permitted, they would still follow the licensing bylaw, whether or not, whether or not the zoning and development bylaw was changed or not changed. So, that still is a standalone. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Question? Question on the deferral called?
I'm okay.
Question on the deferral?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Who's, who's in favor of the deferral? Please raise your hand.
I'm okay now, actually. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. But if she withdrew, does it all right? Okay. Okay. We're back to the original resolution. This is what I love about council. We're very compromising. So, the original resolution is on the floor. Questions called, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Do I have anyone against? So, it's six, six-one. Okay. Is there another resolution to follow up there?
Just the heritage?
Thank you, Your Worship. Heritage Board Resolution Number One.
Yes. Can you just call them in there? Yeah, come on in, Norm. They're getting a little lonely out there.
Some meeting in there.
They're missing some action. Just one second. Okay, CAO Eleanor?
Thank you, Your Worship.
Want to read the resolution? Heritage?
Moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by Councilor McCabe. Be it resolved that the request to place a temporary heritage designation for 10... Be it resolved that the request to place a temporary heritage designation for 10 Prince Street, PID 336321 be approved.
Okay. Yes, Twill, did you remotely press your button? You got it there? Okay, sir, go ahead.
Um, I, I read the email from the property owner. I read the news article on the front page of The Guardian. And I'm, I'm not sure I truly understand, uh, what's taking place with this particular application. I tried to understand the, uh, the commitment that was made to the, uh, business owner. Then I read the email from the property owner and, you know, it seems to be somewhat convincing that, uh, commitment made to the business owner was, he's fulfilling his obligation. Nothing has changed. Nothing has changed. And in his discussions with his solicitor and discussions with, uh, the planning department, it was determined that this wasn't a heritage property. It was, it was made quite clear it wasn't a heritage property, even though it's in the 500 lots. And that brings a whole host of other prerequisites and, uh, and, um, uh, things that need to be, uh, need to be addressed. So, so many different variables to the, to this resolution, this application. We've got the property owner, again, who seems very compelling and his correspondence to, uh, city council. Yet at the same time, we've got the business owner, uh, who's, uh, under the gun, who feels, you know, backs against the wall. What am I gonna do now? I just got started. I gotta find another business. And then the whole issue of the temporary, uh, heritage designation. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure if that's permissible or it's not permissible or it's a way out or it's a way in. There's just so many different variables to this, to this, um, this resolution. I, I think we need to, uh, I, I, I don't know. I've never experienced anything like this in terms of temporary heritage. Like, like, where did this come from in terms of a temporary heritage? Is that legal? Is that the norm? Is that something? I mean, all my years at city council, I've never seen anything like it.
Okay. Deputy Mayor, can you answer that question, please? I think you might have an answer.
I'll give it a, I'll give it a stab. So, you're correct, Counselor Twill. You will have probably in all your years of council never experienced this before because the changes to the heritage bylaw took place in 2019. And in those changes that council approved, that gave a heritage officer, um, authority to ask council at any time to put a 45-day heritage designation on a property if they, if it was deemed, um, that it met a criteria that was well worth it for them to do further investigation. So 10 Prince Street, in staff's opinion, meets that criteria for 45 days to do a further look at this property in the 500 lot area before, before the owner gets a permit to demolish the property because their plan is to rebuild. Now, at, there are still many steps for this, um, owner to go through because it will still, no matter what ends up happening, if the 45-day, um, heritage designation is approved this evening, even after that, the, the, um, applicant will still have to go through a design review process. So that will also have to, um, adhere to the standards of the 500 lot area. So I guess to answer your question, it is, it is permitted. It's, it's in the heritage bylaw. The changes were made in 2019 to permit the staff to do this. And so staff's recommendation and the heritage board's recommendation are to ask council to give a 45-day, um, temporary heritage designation for them to further investigate, um, into the history of this property. That's what I got.
Deputy Mayor, I think it was, correct me if I'm wrong, it was 2018. It was before we come in.
Oh, was it 18?
Yes.
Oh, my apologies. It was 18.
It was the dying days of that last council of 2018.
Last gap before we were elected.
Yeah. Anyways, Counselor Beck?
Yeah, just, uh, one other factor of consideration here is the, um, it, it did, although it wasn't officially designated as a heritage building, it did receive a fairly significant scoring on the, uh, when they go through the, the assessment process. And it did receive a score of 63, I believe, which was above other designations of properties that we've recently done too. So, that was another, um, I guess, um, argument for looking at the 45, that's 45-day designation or temporary designation too. So, um, it was, this is the first time I think that this has ever been implemented.
Yeah.
Um, so it is, you're, you're not incorrect, uh, Counselor Twill, in that regard. I think this is just a, uh, I, I'm in favor of it because I think it provides an element of sober second thought to do a little bit more, uh, exploratory research into it. So, uh, I, I will support, I'm, I, I supported it at the, uh, committee level and I will be supporting the motion here again tonight because I think it's, uh, it's an important property, uh, to be looking at in terms of the overall scope. And like a lot of these things, I want to make sure that we do it right, uh, and not just hastily. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor McCabe?
Unlike Counselor Beck, I didn't support it at committee level because I felt we weren't following process. Property owner went in with the intention of whatever, but because he's now gonna honor a two-year lease and it's a 45-day heritage permit, I'm going to, uh, change my mind and support the temporary variance.
That's all right. No, that's good. Counselor Twill?
So if you look at 10 Prince Street, the features of that building, is that the original state of that building when it was first constructed? Or have there been additions and there hasn't been, uh, alterations made to the exterior of that building? So, if you're gonna classify that as a temporary heritage designation, doesn't that require an assessment of the original state? The original exterior of the building as opposed to additions that were made to the building? Additions and deletions and, I, I'm not sure, but is that truly the original, uh, character? The original exterior of that building? And if it's not, then how do you classify it? A, a heritage designation, even if it's just for 45 minutes or 45 days? Because I don't believe it is.
Thank you, Counselor Twill, for, um, your additional questions. The, um, the heritage officer would have, would have, and I'm only assuming has done their due diligence, because that's their job, is to look at these properties. And for them to give that a score of 63, that would mean, in order, in order to get to this point where we are right now, they would have had to do the past history, which I believe is in, is in, in that report, um, in the, in the documents provided tonight. Now, to your point, um, and when Counselor Beck mentioned that it got a score of 63, it was also mentioned in the report that other properties that have scored slightly higher than that still did not end up with a heritage designation. This is why the heritage officer is asking for 45 days to do their due diligence. And if Donna wants to add to that, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Backstop, Donna?
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, the heritage officer is currently undergoing an assessment and there are a number of requirements that we are looking at to ensure that we don't hastily put, um, designation on a property that does not warrant one. So we are currently doing the assessment.
Is it just a temporary 45-day?
Is that the original state of the building?
Uh, no, that, that's, in terms of what this discovery, um, period is doing, is to do all that fact-finding on the age of the building and so forth. Could you answer that just for the public record? Deputy Mayor?
Yes, that's the, it's a fact, yeah. They're looking for the information.
Could we go through Donna, just so she can verify?
Yes.
Is that all right, Donna?
Oh, thank you, Your Worship. Through you, Madam Chair. The structure actually was constructed in the 1900s. And so the assessment will also look at that, to look at all the additions that were made, all the, um, the changes to see if it still warrants being a heritage resource.
Okay. Question?
Question, how?
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, I have Deputy Yankoff, Counselor Bernard, yay, Counselor McLeary, Counselor Mitteritt, Counselor McKinnon, Counselor Beck, and Counselor McCabe. Those against? Counselors Duran and Twill. Okay, seven two. Another resolution?
Thank you, Your Worship. Planning Board Resolution Number One. Moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that the application for a side yard variance from 1.83 meters, six feet, to approximately 1.24 meters, 4.07 feet, to construct an addition for a garage and media room at 16 Woodbine Street, PID 408385 be rejected.
Counselor Duran?
Brown, I'm just wondering, this is only, you know, what, a, a foot and four or five inches. Why, why is it being rejected? Can someone, can someone tell me that? Like, when you're into only a foot or two feet or here or there, what, why would we want to reject that? Thank you.
Deputy Mary Yankoff?
Thank you. Um, and I'm not saying this sarcastically, but it, it is in the report, um, the pros and the cons of this. Any additional information that we would need, um, I could defer to Donna or David for that. But staff came with a recommendation to not accept. They felt it was not in line with the community and the, and the surrounding areas. And, um, from there, if there's anything more to add to that, I'll, I'll defer to the two of you, David or Donna.
Through Your Worship, Counselor Duran, um, just to add on to what Deputy Mary Yankoff stated, um, in our evaluation of this application, we deemed that, I, I know this would be a, a slight reduction in the side yard setback. It seems rather benign and significant, perhaps. Uh, but it would have resulted in the creation of a garage which was out of scale, out of scope with what you predominantly see in that neighborhood. And principally for that reason, uh, myself and our staff member, our reviewing planner, Brandon Archibald, we deemed that this, um, this application was not appropriate and that should be rejected on that basis, from a community character perspective.
Counselor Twill, then Counselor Duran.
So, in your deliberations, was there further consultation with the property owner if the proposed, uh, addition was at a scale with other garages in the neighborhood? Um, did you examine whether or not, uh, there's an option to reduce the footprint of the garage and, and, and consult with the owner to see if there was, uh, you know, if there was, you know, uh, an opportunity to achieve that end? Was there any attempt to, uh, have those discussions?
Counselor Twill? The Chair of the Board?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I, I just want to make sure that she has the op-
I'm sorry.
Uh, Chair, Deputy Mary Yankoff, your response?
Thank you. Yep, thank you.
The system has detected that a few lines are still connected to the conference and will attempt to disconnect them. If you wish to remain in the conference, please press star one. 15.
Yeah. We hung up on them. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Twill, for that question. Um, I'm not sure what kind of communication that the planners and, and David had with the applicant. Um, I didn't see anything in the report, but if you would like, I can defer that question to David and he can see, um, if he can give any more clarity for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy. And David?
Uh, through Your Worship, Counselor Twill. To address that, our reporting planner, Brandon Archibald, he did follow up with the owners in that regard. Uh, he did advise them, uh, that planning staff deemed the application couldn't be supported. The applicants, my understanding is that they seemed to be amenable to that perspective that staff had, uh, and that they were willing to, um, adjust their building plans, uh, to meet, meet the zoning bylaw requirements such that they could perhaps achieve a similar footprint, similar size to the garage that would still be in conformity to the zoning bylaw.
Counselor Duran?
Thank you. Thank you once again for, for answering this. And the reason why I brought it up here is, I know it's in the package, I know the explanation is in the package, but people look at the resolutions and say, okay, you're, you're not approving a garage for, uh, a foot and three inches and then we flip the next resolution, well, you're gonna approve that for less than a foot, right? So, the explanation comes, or the requirement or the request, is to have more information in the resolution, that we don't just look that we're approving a foot and a half here and rejecting a foot and a half there. You know, in the resolution, it should have a better explanation if, if that makes sense. You know, because, because when you look at the resolutions, I'll be getting a call, what is wrong with you? You know, why did you do this and not that? Because people look at the resolutions and it's not there for clarity. And, like I said, all's I'm asking is for the next time, there's be a better clarity of the resolution. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Counselor Duran. And again, not to be facetious, but every resolution that comes forward to council is included with a report. And not every detail of the report is in the resolution. I understand where you're coming from with that, but every resolution cannot include every single detail from a planning report. Now, if I'm mistaken, David, you can correct me. Thank you.
Uh, through Your Worship, Counselor Duran, um, I appreciate the comment that perhaps more context can be provided, but, um, you know, uh, my understanding is that council is presented with the resolutions as they're forwarded from Planning Board and the respective committees and boards. Uh, so the context is contained in the original planning report. Um, I mean, we could certainly adjust the wording in future of some of our resolutions to give, kind of, give more emphasis to the context as to why, in this case, we're recommending a, a refusal and in this case, we're recommending an approval. That's certainly, um, an iteration that we, an evolution of the process that we can, um, adjust moving forward, uh, to give council better information, better clarity.
Counselor Mitteritt?
Thank you, Your Worship. To the Chair, um, through Counselor Duran's comments, I, I do support, um, some, some more context as well. I think it's important, certainly can be drawn out here during discussion and debate back and forth. Uh, but I know I went back and forth through these two resolutions trying to make the comparisons myself to wonder why one, uh, but I believe in this particular property, you know, it's a much, it's not apples to apples, it's a much larger building. I think there was 12-foot wall, 60, 60 feet long, et cetera. So I, you know, it, it took me a while to kind of go back and forth and do the comparisons. Uh, but I think, you know, when we're, we're looking at these resolutions, and I will support Counselor Duran's comments, is that sometimes it'll look like why this one versus that one over a minute, you know, a very miniscule amount of, uh, feet or width to that. So, uh, thank you for that, Counselor Duran.
I know, Deputy Mayor, that the meetings are open, all the Planning Board meetings. I know we're busy in our schedules, but there's a lot of information, as Counselors McCabe and Beck know, that there's a lot of information the planners provide and how much you put into resolution. There must be a standard form, and I think we're following the standard form. Okay, ready to vote? No, Counselor Twill, you already spoke twice.
I'm sorry.
Okay, let's, looking at my, it says XX.
So, um, if, if the property owner agreed to reduce the footprint of the garage, then why's the resolution here?
Because we have to reject this.
We, no, no, but, did those deliberations take place before you brought the recommendation to Planning Board?
Counselor Twill?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. To, to the Chair of Planning, Development and Heritage? Deputy Mary Yankoff?
The, um, the applicant has the option to, um, bring their application back if they don't want it to still come to council. But from my understanding, they still wanted to proceed with this on the off chance that perhaps council didn't agree with staff's recommendation. So now they can now turn around and go back and create a plan that's an as-of-right. an as-of-right, which we won't see that as-of-right, because they'll, they'll do it within the, within the zoning and development bylaw, so we won't see this again, because they will now work with the planning staff to adhere to what is already an as-of-right, um, garage.
Okay, let's get away from the football, and let's get back to the resolution. Is there a question on the floor? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Nine zero. Carried. Thank you, thank you.
Planning Board Resolution Number Two, moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Councilor McCabe. Be it resolved that the application for a variance to reduce the side yard setback from 1.83 meters, six feet, to approximately 1.56 meters, 5.12 feet, to construct, um, a 39.2 square meter, 420 square foot garage addition at 169 Southdale Avenue, PID 419788, be approved.
Council Twill, uh, no, Council Duran?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Through to the Chair, Lynn, I'm wondering if, if we can get a process, uh, put together that this doesn't have to come back to council. Like, if, if we're debating two feet, I mean, the professional planners, they have their designation, they know what they're doing, but it comes to us to debate a few feet, would there be, uh, an appetite to have, you know, an approval process that, that maybe the professional planners can, can make a, you know, a designation or, or something, if it, if it fits in with the planning, uh, approval process of, say, five feet or less or something? It just seems silly to me to come back here for three inches or, or a foot and a half, you know? Could, could we make, maybe the CAO, if, if, uh, the Chair can't answer it, someone answer that? There should be a better way than us coming back and discussing, you know, two or three feet either way.
I think Deputy wants to answer that.
Thank you, Council Duran. So, that would be a complete change to our zoning and development bylaw. I would, I would suggest that if you want that to be put onto a, a Planning and Heritage Committee meeting to get a report together, you might want to have a look at examples over the years of where you, you might wish that it did come to council, because although it seems like very frustrating, there, I think there are times when you would regret that that change was made to the zoning and development bylaw, but if you wish, I can take this back to our Planning and Heritage Committee and get a report together to bring back to council, if you like.
Council Duran?
Yes, that'd be great, just to have staff and the committee to look at it, just to, to take away some red tape for a few inches or a few feet, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Question? Question called. All those in favor? Okay, nine zero. Okay, thank you. Next one, uh?
Planning Board Resolution Number Three, moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Councilor McCabe. Be it resolved that the request to amend Appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw from single detached residential R1L zone to low-density residential R2 zone for the property located at Lot 39 Oak Drive, PID 392936, be approved to proceed to public consultation.
Okay. Looks pretty easy to public consultation. Question? Question called, all those in favor? Okay, nine zero, great. Second, um, Council Twill, if you want to ask a question as a follow-up, do you want to just, which one are you looking at? Are you looking at? On 39 Oak Drive? That's, huh? Yes. That was one, 39. Okay, oh, good. Okay, I think we have some. Okay, thank you. Oh. Okay.
Planning Board Resolution Number Four, moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Councilor McCabe. Be it resolved, um, that the request to approve the development concept plan contain an attachment D of the Planning and Heritage Department recommendation report, and the following requests related to 247, 251 Mount Edward Road, PIDs 390625 and 390633. Amend Appendix B comprehensive development area parcels and permitted uses of the City of Charlottetown zoning and development bylaw to permit a two-phase residential development, including Phase One 16-stack townhouse dwellings, 32 units, and three apartment dwellings, 42 units, on 5.25 acres of land. In Phase Two, three apartment dwellings, 175 units, two stacked townhouses, four units. Amend Appendix A, the City of Charlottetown future land use map from low-density residential to comprehensive planning area for the easterly portion of the subject property. Amend Appendix G zoning map of the City of Charlottetown zoning and development bylaw from low-density residential single R2S zone to comprehensive development area CDA for the easterly portion of the subject property. Consolidate 247 Mount Edward Road, PID 390625, and 251 Mount Edward Road, PID 390633 into one lot. Be approved, subject to the following conditions. Subject to Section 44.4.2, comprehensive development area agreements of the zoning and development bylaw, prior to permit approval of any phase and, for any Phase One and Phase Two development, a development agreement between the property owner and the City of Charlottetown setting out the terms and conditions of the development concept plan shall be executed, including the following. One, pursuant to Section 44.2.6, comprehensive development area agreements of the zoning and development bylaw, prior to permit approval for any Phase One and Phase Two development, a detailed site plan, floor plan, and building elevation drawings shall be approved by City Council on the recommendation of Planning Board, provided that it is in the opinion of council that the drawings are consistent with the approved development concept plan. Two, that the property owner shall complete the following conditions to the satisfaction of the manager of Public Works. Number one, driveway access off Spencer Drive shall be designed and constructed to be, uh, right-in, right-out only. Two, intersection treatments shall be designed and constructed, including a median on the new Spencer Drive roadway.
Question? Question's called? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those against? Okay, Council Duran, eight one. Okay. Now, thank you.
City of Charlottetown short-term rental licensing bylaw.
Okay, so, again, Councilors Twill and Beck? Have to leave the room? Just right there. Okay. Thank you.
City of Charlottetown short-term rental licensing bylaw, bylaw PHSTR, uh, dot two dash zero zero zero, to adopt, um, bylaw PHSTR two zero zero zero, to adopt a new short-term rental licensing bylaw for the City of Charlottetown for administering licenses pertaining to tourist homes. Be it resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlottetown short-term rental licensing bylaw, PHSTR two zero zero zero, as attached, be read the first time and approved, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council. Moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Councilor McCabe.
Okay. Do you wish to speak to, this the first reading? You're all right? Good, okay.
I would just remind folks that if you have anything you wanted to speak to on this, now's the time to do so, because at the second reading, there's no opportunity to speak.
Correct, that's why. Okay. Question? Okay, shall I carry? Okay. Just, I have to go for a recorded vote. Council McCabe, yea or nay? Council Duran? Council, Council Duran, McKinnon? Deputy Mary Yankoff? Council Bernard? Council McLeary and Council Mitteritt? Yea, okay, so that's six one. Do you have to read it again, or just? Okay. Good, just one second. Just to put it. Councilors Twill?
Thank you, your worship. City of Charlottetown amendment to the official plan, PHOPA one. To adopt the official plan amendment, PHOPA one, uh, dash thirty-seven, the land uses for the easterly portion of 247 to 251, um, Mount Edward Road, PIDs, uh, 390625 and 390633, as shown in Appendix A, future land use map of the City of Charlottetown official plan, is designated as a comprehensive planning area, hereby excluding it from its formal designation of low-density residential. Be it resolved that the official plan amendment, PHOPA one, dash thirty-seven-
Oh, she's, she's going to go get them, keep going.
Keep going?
Yep.
As it pertains to 247, 251 Mount Edward Road, PIDs 390625 and 390633, as attached, be adopted. Moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff and seconded by Councilor McCabe. Zoning and Development bylaw, PHZD two, to adopt, uh, PHZD two dash seventy-two, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw, to amend Appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw for the easterly portion of 247, 251 Mount Edward Road, PIDs 390625 and 390633, uh, from the low-density residential R2S zone to comprehensive development area CDA zone, and Appendix B comprehensive development area CDA parcels and permitted uses for 247, 251 Mount Edward Road, PIDs 390625 and 390633, to permit a two-phase residential development, including, uh, Phase One 16-stack townhouses, dwellings, 32 units, and three apartment dwellings, 42 units, on 5.25 acres of land. In Phase Two, three apartment dwellings, 175 units, two stacked townhouses, four units. Be it resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlottetown zoning and development bylaw, PHZD two dash seventy-two, as it pertains to 247, 251 Mount Edward Road, PIDs 390625 and 390633, as attached, be read a first time and approved, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council. Moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff and seconded by Councilor McCabe.
Shall I pass? Pass? Okay. Council Twill? Yea. McCabe, Council McCabe. Council Beck? Yea. Council Duran? Nay. Council McKinnon? Yea. Deputy Mayor? Yea. Council Bernard? Council McLeary? Yea. Okay. Eight one. Council Duran? P, carried. And is that it? Okay. Deputy, just before we go, if I go to page 205 on our digital copy, uh, I just, I always look at these numbers at the end of the month, so building construction statistics for September 2023, totals were 123, 124 million. And if I look at the year before, September 2022, totals on the, until the end of September 2022, says 11 million? There must be a mistake there. If you can just, unless I'm, unless that's 101, 111 million, but it says 11, 632, 860. If, we can just get that looked at? David? Donna? Thanks. Okay. Parks and Recreation, Council Twill? You're on the floor, sir? Press the button.
We have three resolutions for, for our council's consideration. You'll notice in your report, there's also, uh, a copy in the minutes from the, uh, Seniors Engagement Committee meeting, as well as from the Youth, uh, Committee meeting. I did take the opportunity to meet with the Seniors Engagement Committee meeting. I was requested to be there, and, again, uh, constant theme here at City Hall, uh, safety and security for the seniors around the Outreach Center, once again, is a major issue, as well as drug paraphernalia ending up on the doorsteps, backyards of, uh, residents in this particular community, as well as the other venues and facilities, whether it be the schools, local businesses. And, uh, the result of the discussion was they're going to invite, uh, as a starting point, they're going to invite the Chair of the Protective Services Committee and the Chief of Police, and to have a discussion regarding their security, around their concerns about the, uh, security around the Outreach Center. Where on the safety? I'll do my best to answer any questions.
Okay. Council Twill, thank you very much. Council Duran?
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and thank you, Council Twill, for your report. It, it's come, uh, to me, a few questions, people ask me, uh, saying that some parks are, are closed due to, um, alleged needles. Is there any truth to that? I, I don't know if, if you're aware, or the manager's aware, uh, you know, some people have told me, you know, just in, in passing, that this park or that park's been, been closed. I, I know, uh, you know, we haven't done that in, in our area as of yet, but we have some issues, but can you confirm or denies, or any parks ever closed because of this? Thank you.
Council Twill?
Thank you for your question, Council Duran. It's no secret it's a major issue in the community, uh, where these parks, uh, are, placed, um, I know there is concerns, uh, from residents that live in the community that no longer, uh, use the parks at their leisure, whether it be to walk their dog or take their children to these particular parks. Can I confirm whether or not parks are not in operation anymore? Not that I'm aware of, I know there's been some dramatic changes, for example, the Joguys Park, picnic table was taken out, uh, to, uh, discourage, uh, folks with addictions being there all day and all night, using it as an encampment site. Well, it's, you know, just to reinforce what I said, it's no secret that, uh, you know, with the drug paraphernalia, that's, uh, in the playgrounds, the sports fields, uh, some sports fields have decided, or sport organizations have decided to look to, uh, other sports fields to use, because, you know, they're tired of coaches, administrators, support staff combing, combing the fields prior to a game being played and, and picking up, uh, picking up dirty needles. I don't know if that answers your question, but we do have our manager here of, uh, Parks and Rec, and, and maybe Frank, you can, uh, even give us some more specific details, if you did mind, please.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn?
Your worship, uh, through to the Chair, uh, and through to Council Duran, I have not been aware of any parks being closed. Has there been needles occasionally found in parks? Yes, they have been, but they have not been ever closed, and if we had issues in a park that we were dealing with, we would, like Joguys Park, we've done a number of things to, to improve that park, and you'll see the park is in much better condition.
Council Mitteritt?
Thank you, your worship, to the Chair, uh, you may recall, a couple weeks ago, a council we passed to have a safe and, or, uh, a needle drop box, I think one was placed at Joguys Park. Do we have- Do we have any understanding or statistics or numbers about how much that's being utilized at this point in time, Mr. Chair? That and the other park, I believe there was a second park that it was also placed.
Counselor Twill.
I don't believe we do, not, it wasn't, as you know, as a member of the committee, that issue was not on the agenda, and we didn't have an opportunity to discuss it. But again, I'll defer to our manager, Parks and Recreation, to see if he can give us a status report, an update, if you will, as to, you know, whether it's working or not working. I know I have received some feedback from the community about putting these amenities in the parks. I'll leave it at that for now. Frank?
Mr. Quinn.
Your Worship, through the Chair and through to Counselor Matard. Right now, it's in the early stages, so we're just starting the process. So it's too early for me to say how much should be utilized. I haven't had an opportunity to get that information from staff yet, because they're just started. I think they've only been put in for less than a month. So once I have that, I will be bringing back an update to the committee, which will be in our package, so.
And Counselor Twill, there's one at Joe Gis Park, and there's one also at the beginning of the trail going into, going to the temporary emergency shelter, is that the other one?
Yep. So I understand.
Yeah, the both locations are close, quite close, Your Worship, so Joe Gis Park, at the picnic shelter, and the other location is at the pathway that goes in off of Kensington Road.
Okay, thank you. Good report, Counselor Twill. Nobody's asking questions very thorough. Okay. Do we have some resolutions?
Ready to roll.
Resolutions for action.
Thank you, Your Worship, Parks Recreation and Leisure Activities Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor Twill, seconded by Counselor Bernard. Be it resolved that as per the recently advertised request for proposals for the Park Woodland Hazard Tree Removal and Fuel Reduction Project, the City of Charlottetown accepts the hourly rate for equipment and operator bid of five hundred and twenty dollars plus applicable taxes from Laird Tree Care Incorporated, and that the total hours to complete the scope of work at the nineteen park sites is estimated to be four hundred and fifty-six hours for a total estimate of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, a hundred and twenty dollars plus applicable taxes, and that the city will claim, make a claim to the province's Disaster Relief Fund to recover up to eighty percent of the costs of this project. And further that, the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
You all right with that, Counselor Twill? Want to move it? Question? Okay. Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Nine zero. Okay. Thank you. Second one.
Parks Recreation and Leisure Activities Committee Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor Twill, seconded by Counselor Matard. Be it resolved that as per the recently advertised tender for the J. Frank McCauley Park Trail Upgrades, Phase One, the City of Charlottetown accepts the bid of eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars plus applicable taxes from Island Coastal Services Limited, and the amount of nineteen thousand, three hundred plus applicable taxes for Phase One and Two from CBCL Limited for Engineering, Project Management, and Professional Services be accepted. And further that, the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay. Counsel, Counselor Twill.
Yes, this is something that the community's been wanting for a long time. I know that Counselor Matard, to his credit, has lobbied extensively for the upgrades to the, to the pathways and the trails in, in the Frank McCauley Park. And it's a tribute to your persistence, Counselor, to see this come to fruition. I want to take this opportunity and congratulate you on, on your determination. Thank you.
Questions called. Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Nine zero. Next one. Okay, just one second. Ramsey. Absent. PB carried. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Water and Sewer, Counselor Dron. No, that's what I was thinking. Is there not another one? Oh. Could you speak to that, Frank? No, Frank.
Your, Your Worship, through to the Chair. There's, there's only two resolutions. The other one will be coming if, at a, at another date if deemed necessary. We did get requests, the committee approved the Windsor Lions Club request. We still have to grow to, to, to receive more quotes because of the value, but once, once we have received those, we'll be ringing that forward.
That's the install of the water. Access to the water.
Yes, to provide to the new Windsor Lions-
I thought there was another one too there, but he has to get bids.
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Dron. And Mr. McEwen's there too. Good evening, Mr. McEwen.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Our Water and Sewer Utility Committee did not meet in September. We are meeting on Thursday to discuss important matters forthcoming. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them as best I can. Thank you.
Okay. Former committee members asking. Counselor Twill, got a question there?
Thank you, Counselor Dron. You know, I believe most of the work is completed now for the fiber optic. It's kind of one end of the city and has progressed to the point, I believe it's almost completed, I'm not sure. But my question is, has the contract been signed? Has the lawyers been working on the contract for, I don't know, a year, year and a half? Has the contract been signed with the, you know, with the City of Charlottetown? And if it's to be signed, is that contract, does that come to City Council? And will we approve that by resolution? And if the contract hasn't been signed, can you give me a progress report?
Counselor Dron, can you give an update on your project? Hydrooptic?
Yeah, it's coming, it's coming to near completion. They're working hard on it, but to answer your question, and I'll do respect, it'll be on the agenda for Thursday. We'll give you a progress report at that time, and probably at council as well. We didn't meet, they were still working on it. The lawyers are working on the contract, so probably at the end of the week, we'll, we'll give you an update on that, if that's suitable. Thank you.
So just keep an eye on your email. Keep an eye on your email, just in case it's coming. From yourself, Counselor Dron, or from the manager? Or both?
That's an operational issue, so I'm sure it'll come from the manager after our discussions on Thursday. But you will be at the meeting, I won't have to email you, so.
Oh, no, I'll be there. I'll miss those meetings, good meetings. Yeah, Paul, it'll be coming from Pauline. Pauline Gas McIntyre. So we have, that's it? Counselor Dron, that's it? Thanks, Richard. Next one is Public Works, Counselor McCabe.
Thank you, Your Worship. So our Public Works committee-
Matt, on September the twenty-seventh, there are draft minutes in your package. Our Civic Board with persons, for persons with disabilities also met, but I don't see the package minutes, so they might have to be typed up. I didn't see those in here. So, anyway, it was a good meeting. Hopefully, we'll get those minutes in the next package. There are three anticipated resolutions tonight, and just to give a little update from the department, they're gearing up the trucks and loaders now with plowing and salt equipment, getting ready for the winter. They've asked residents to call in any concerns if they see things in the city. It could be a little bit later before, some things will be deferred till next spring, but for emergency situations, they will get out and get things dealt with. And they also asked residents to pay attention to the Island Waste Watch Management's Fall Cleanup Program and make sure that their debris is packed and piled where it's supposed to be, where it's not impacting sidewalks and road usage. This is not a city initiative, and they want residents to make sure that they know, because if they miss the deadline, it's just not going to get picked up, and then that stuff is left, and it'll impact snow removal and, and sidewalk removal for, for the fall. So if you want to remind your residents of that, and if there's any other questions, or if there's any questions on the report, both the manager and myself will do our best to answer your questions.
Okay, Counselor Matard, Counselor Dron.
Thank you, Chair McCabe. You indicated that the winter is coming, they're gearing up the machines, getting things ready. So my question around is, there's a number of projects that were on the list for repaving in a number of phases. Will there be enough time to complete that this year? I think the asphalt plant might close sometime in November. So I'm curious to know, obviously through you, too, through the manager, will we get through all of those projects this year?
When updated, based on those projects, on our capital projects and stuff, it sounded like everything that was supposed to be done will be done, but Scott, I'm going to allow you to respond to that in case something's changed.
Your Worship, through to Counselor Matard. So yes, the contractor's under contractual obligations to finish everything this year. We have no, there has been no indication that they're not going to complete everything within timelines. The challenge with providing an exact date when they're coming to roads is quite challenging, just because there's still some work that both our, our department and Water and Sewer are doing on these streets just to get ready. Usually, it's just a couple of days' worth of work right at this moment, but there, so there are still a few of those impacts, but no, we don't see any issues with any of these streets not being completed by the time the plant closes.
Counselor Dron.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Thank you, Counselor McCabe. Just one question about the new, the new building up at the airport. You know, when would the staff be moving into that? I know on Mount Edward Road, we have a pumping station there, and a lot of the equipment is there, and, and the neighbors are wondering, you know, are you going to move this before the winter, you know, in case it, it can't be moved at that time, and we don't get an opportunity to clean up that area? So I said I'd ask the question, you know, I think it's been sitting there for, for a little while, it's, it's been completed, I believe. So I'm just wondering, when, when would the departments be moving into the new building? Thank you.
Counselor McCabe.
Well, I, I hope they're in. I reported, or almost in, we reported that they'd be in last time. I thought we were supposed to be in already, but I'm going to let the manager respond to that with an exact date.
Your Worship, through to Counselor Dron. So where we're at right now, so the commissioning just happened, so that, we're still waiting for that final report, but I think everything went good for that. So we will be taking official ownership very soon on the building, and as of right now, the plan is to start moving staff over, I believe it's the last week of October. And the reason is, we didn't want to move, we had talks with both Departments, Water and Sewer, and Parks and Rec, with both their senior staff, and they both expressed concern about moving too early. They're in the midst of finishing up a busy season, and we understand that as well, we're in the same boat, and they were just very concerned about trying to do a move in the midst of finalizing the number of projects that they're currently working on. And so we all agreed that the end of the October would be the time when we start moving staff over first, the office staff over first, and then start moving equipment and, and materials over. And so that's, that's a bit of the holdup, was just, we, we just didn't want to cause any, any issues to each department, or any hardships to each department, when they're both out flat busy, especially this time of year wrapping projects up.
Counselor Bernard.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just want to say thank you to the Chair for bringing the speed bump issue back to the committee and have reading, reading it over, and Option Two does look like one that I would be supporting. Just a couple of questions on Option Two. So in Option Two, it doesn't say that the speed bumps, in Option One, it was saying that, that speed bumps will be down for a four- to five-year period. It doesn't say that in Option Two. I'm assuming that will be the same for Option Two. The other question I had was, can staff like the police department, or can they make recommendations? If they feel there's a safety issue somewhere, can the police come and say, you know what, talk to staff, say, there's, there's a reason here we'd like, we think a speed bump would, would help, it's a safety issue? Would they have that opportunity to make that recommendation?
The police department, is that who you're asking?
Counselor McCabe.
The police department can?
Yeah, or staff, yeah.
I would say that they would do that in any case, as, as professionals that are looking at the streets, and I think that can be clarified in there. And yes, I think what was discussed is, they were still going to in- keep the, the application process, and with that, then, it's kind of like determined that's where, you know, things would be put down, and I, I would assume, unless there's reason to change, is that what the plan would be, Scott? We didn't really get into that final tune. Are they there forever and ever, amen? Or will that be reevaluated as we go?
Your Worship, through to the Chair and on to Counselor Bernard. So we haven't drafted the final policy on how that will look, but some of the ideas are, are the thought process internally for how long the speed hump would last there. It could be there for a long time. It, again, the goal is a collaborative approach with the residents, the counselor, of course, staff as well. We want to make it more, to make it more of a, like I say, collaborative approach, so that everyone has some involvement in it, on, on where the final placements are going. So if a speed hump is felt by the community and, and the, and the counselor of the area feels that the speed hump is working very well, I, we wouldn't see any way, reason to relocate it elsewhere into the ward. But if it isn't working anymore, or if the issue's resolved due to, you know, due to the demographic changes in the area, then, then we, by all means, we can relocate it to, to another location in the ward that has been agreed to by the residents and the counselor, of course. From staff perspective, of course, we will always help facilitate that process, help provide guidance to the residents and counselor on some proper location on the streets that maybe we're seeing some issues on, and same with police. So that wording will be in that final, final policy document, which we hope to bring back to committee later this month for our next meeting, to bring back to council next month.
Okay. Thank you.
Second time, Counselor. Yep, yep, yep.
Second one. Still good.
Yep.
Okay. And thanks again. The other question was, so it's, it's still a draft to come, but the interesting to see once they do the, so they're going to do an average of all the residential streets, and that will determine the amount of speed bump per ward, then, correct? That's all.
Yeah, so.
That is what they're looking at right now, Counselor Bernard, is they will kind of look at the amount of roadway on average. They said it would look at about ten per ward, but depending on what ward you're in, it could look a little different for one ward than another wards.
Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Counselor Yankoff. Deputy Mayor Yankoff.
Thank you, Counselor McCabe, for your report. I was reading through the minutes on the speed humps, and I, I have a few questions or concerns around both Options One and Two. When I read in the minutes, it talks about, you know, evenly dispersing these speed humps and increasing the, the inventory from seventy-five to a hundred, so each counselor would get ten. And I always thought that speed humps were about safety, and I'm just worried that we're politicizing speed humps. I mean, we talk about worst first, and we talk about sidewalks, and, and we're not supposed to get involved in the operations of sidewalks, but we're going to get involved in the operations of safety and speed humps. So maybe I'm missing something here, you know, because I know there's talk with our Public Works Manager about speed humps are temporary, and really, there's permanent fixes around com, traffic calming, and maybe being bold and brave in reducing speed limits, like we heard at Capital Cities last week. And I'm just, I'm still slightly not convinced that dividing them up, ten per ward, or approximately that way, is, is the right approach, and I'm wondering, you know, what's wrong with the existing system that we're in now? Is it not working? And those are, I'm, I'm glad we're not voting tonight, because I think there's still quite a bit of work that committee has to do on this, so, thank you.
Counselor McCabe.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Yankoff. And, and you know, I agree, and I can see that too, where, where it gets a little confusing, where it's operational versus political, but I think that most of us know that speeding's an issue in every street, and I guess, when, depending on where you're hearing the concerns and stuff from, because we can't know-
depending on where you're hearing the concerns and stuff from, because we can't know everything all the time. And so we do have to kind of count on our residents when you're getting 90 calls from Maple Avenue and Sherwood, you know, that maybe that's an area that's problematic and at least looks at staff coming in to do the assessment and determine and working with the community. So I think it's just your middle person to help them understand where you're hearing the main concerns from. But I'll let Scott answer that in a minute. Don't forget, and Scott, we can look at this traffic calming measure document, really going back to looking at the criteria that are in place too for where the speed humps can go, and maybe really incorporating a nice document to try and help clarify where, where and when. But I think my understanding at committee level was that it's more an opportunity because usually the call of frustration, when, especially on the outskirts of Charlottetown, I know I get them all the time, Counsel Bernard's hearing them, I'm sure Justin and Bob, when you're on those longer road streets, you tend to get a lot of calls. And sometimes we don't know. And it's our job then to let them know to maybe go out and have a look and then start the process. That's how I see the, more than us saying, here's where the speed humps are going. I still think that would be the job of the experts. But Scott, chime in if I'm misinterpreting what we discussed.
Your worship through to Counselor McCabe and on to Deputy Mayor. Yes, the goal is to make it more of collaborative approach. Again, you folks around here in council, you guys feel the number of phone calls from your residents on concerns of speeding. We don't get a lot of them. We don't get all of them, of course. We do hear from some of them, of course. But again, it's to try to make it a, to get everyone to share in, you know, the speed hump process. What we've tend to find happens is, and that's where, that's where it's a bit of a struggle. You know, we have some streets where we have 10 residents, some street where we have 100 residents. You know, if, on the street with 10 residents, five want and five don't, you know, does that warrant a speed hump or not versus a street that has 100 residents and, you know, 20 want it, but 80 don't. But, you know, it does have a problem. It starts to become challenging on where to, for staff, where do we put them? And we get a lot of phone calls on why it's here, can it be moved, can it be relocated? So we thought this is a better opportunity, especially for council. You know, you got, you folks are out there in the community, meeting with people, talking with the community. It's, it's a way for us to have the support from you folks to, to sell out these locations and where they're going, have that support so that we're not fielding, it's to benefit both of us so that we're not fielding a number of calls every year on speed humps because they can be quite cumbersome. Again, it's to try to ease this process and make it easier for everyone at the end of the day.
Do you want to follow up, Counsel Yankoff? Is that what you want to do? Go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor McCabe. I listened to the meeting and the reason that I was more concerned than, I mean, the manager's explanations are great, but the question was asked, and I paraphrase, in the meeting, so that means approximately 10, maybe nine, maybe 11 per ward. So the wards that are more residential, that have more than that, the question was, well, will they lose out? And some of those would be taken away. And the answer was yes. So that's what concerns me because if they're there because of safety, why would you take them away if they're not, if it's not safe? So those are just the things I heard from listening to the meeting, which is why I just wanted to flag them. Thank you.
Want to respond to that? Because I, I mean, I was in the discussion too, but you can go ahead first.
Certainly, through the mayor to Deputy Mayor. And I apologize if there was confusion. I don't recall the exact statement. So, but how we would determine the number of speed humps per ward would be, our staff will go through and identify every residential street in the city. It's an exercise that we can do. And then we essentially say, we'll say, if one ward has 20% of the residential streets, they would get 20% of the speed hump allotment. So it's based on the percentage of residential streets that are in your ward would be the determining number of speed humps that would be allotted for that ward.
Okay. Counsel Twill? Do you want to respond there?
I just want another clarification. It is going to be a recess, from what I understand. We're not, all the speed humps that are where they are right now aren't necessarily going back to where they are right now. Is that correct? Scott?
Your worship through to Counsel McCabe. Again, that'd be part of the process when we start looking at the locations. Again, each ward will be different. Some wards may look identical. Other wards may be quite different. Again, it will depend on this collaborative approach as we, correct, as we, and the criteria, as we, our goal would be to set these kind of sometime in February, when we start having these talks about the, where those locations will go, or where these speed humps will go, and getting ready for the spring. So again, it's hard to say exactly what each ward will look like until we start those discussions.
Counsel Twill.
The idea of being involved in the process, because what was happening, what I've been experiencing is residents do fill out the form, they don't hear anything back. Not a criticism of the department, but they don't get a response and they're, and they're left wondering like what, what, what's happening. We went through the process and whether there's an explanation for the rejection or not, the residents weren't getting that information. So, you know, I certainly have a general good idea of where, where the speeding's taking place in my ward. So I, I think we need to have, need to have an involvement and have discussions with their staff to let them know, you know, it could be Gower Street, it could be Upper Prince Street, Walton Drive, Queen Street, you know, Mahoney Drive, just a short little, small pathway, but there's, there's speeders on that street. And requests were made before, to no avail. And, and we got seniors. There's no sidewalks on that street. The seniors are walking up and down the street and, and they're terrified with the speeding. So I think this gives us an opportunity to maybe play, play that critical role in at least trying it for, you know, six months to, to a year to see how it works out. In some cases, it might not work out. We put one on Laphdorn Avenue. Some residents wanted it. Next thing you know, I mean, it was adamant, get the, get it out of there. And I, and I had no choice because, because of the banging and clanging of going over those speed humps. So let's, let's be clear here. The speed humps are not the end-all-be-all because of some of the negative connotations that it brings to it. So, yeah, I'm glad we're involved. Thank you, Scott.
Counsel Beck.
Just a quick question, Scott.
Okay, you got the floor now. We know you got the floor.
Okay, quick, quick question. When do the, when do you start removing the speed humps for this season?
Counsel McCabe.
Wonderful smart manager.
Counsel McCabe.
Your worship through to Counsel Beck. So we typically begin the removal at the end of this month. In November, it's, it's anyone's guess when we're going to start seeing freezing temperatures and, and snow falling. So we try to get them up by the end of October, early November is when, when our crews will be out. So you'll see them out very soon.
Okay. Good. Three resolutions. Do you want to read first one there?
Thank you, your worship. Public Works Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor Mackler. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public request for proposal engineering services five, Queen Street Stormwater Management Study, the submission of CBCL Limited in the amount of $60,000 plus applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Question called? Question's called? Wait, no question's called? Do you want to take back the question there, Counsel Duran? You don't want to? Okay. Counsel Twill, sit down.
Yeah, I'm glad to see the resolution here. I think it's timely. We've had many challenges down at Queen Street. I'm hoping that this study will, will give the department and the community some options as to what can be done to prevent the water rising down in this low part of the city. My question is, will, will the residents in Costello Lane, Conley Street Reserve Valley, as well as Queen, Desperse, Douglas Street, will they all be, all those streets be included in this particular study? And furthermore, will the residents have an opportunity too, to become engaged in the process? Because they know firsthand where, where, where the challenges are and when the water rises and where it rises and what are, what are some of the, you know, some of the fears that they experience? Anytime there's a rain event that takes place here in the city and they're becoming very frequent. So just wondering if there's that opportu, I want to know the scope of the project in terms of the study. And then secondly, I'd like to know, or I'd like to have the involvement of the constituency so they can have that opportunity to, to collaborate with the consultant. Thank you.
Counsel McCabe.
Okay, I think we did discuss this, Counsel Twill, at the committee level, but I think this is where the machine's going down and to look at. Is this to look at the infrastructure? Is that this project, Scott? I don't see where we'd have, I'm just looking in the notes here. But I don't think we're going to, that's more the actual infrastructure and stuff that they're going to be looking at through this study, isn't it? It's not going to be going out to communities to find out where, where they know, we already know there's problems. So what they're doing is they're taking this equipment to go down and see what's going on. But you can explain it better like you already did.
Okay.
Through your worship, on to Counsel Twill. So the scope is, is we are hired a consultant to review the storm water in the area. And under Queen Street has a fairly major storm water trunk that handle, it takes water from a number of areas, a number of feeder pipes. So the goal will be to understand what is happening in that pipe during a major rainfall event. And the outcomes of that research will look at, they'll look at a lot of options. Can we re-divert some of that water that's coming into that feeder line to another underutilized storm trunk? Or do we have to find a solution to have localized storage? Can we upsize it, upsize that existing pipe? They'll, they'll be reviewing a number of options so that storm water's not pooling on the road surface during a major rainfall event. So it, it's really, there's nearly no public engagement. It's all about understanding dynamics of the underground infrastructure, having a better understanding of that, and then playing with a couple of options on how we can manage that water underground so we're not having the same issue that we have when we do have a major rainfall event.
Counsel Twill, second question.
You don't think it'd be advantageous to have the community be involved in saying, the water rises here, here's where it's really problematic? Why not? They take pictures, they're, they're involved, they're there. They're there because of anxiety, because of fear. Some of the, they clean off the catch basins. So you don't see any, any importance of not having them involved, at least participating. Maybe they could be given information to the consultant, maybe the consultant's not aware of. Why not have them, why not have them involved, at least forward information on to them? It can only be a real benefit to the consultant so that his report is all-inclusive.
Okay. Counsel McCabe.
I think, again, we're just going to start with looking at the actual infrastructure that's under the ground. And then maybe when we get the information gathered, would be really good opportunity to educate and collaborate with the community at that point, once they know what they're dealing with and what the plan would be moving forward. But for this initial part, Counsel Twill, it's just going to be get on there and see what's going on, find out how the water moves and come up with some sort of a plan to mitigate some of the issues that we've been having.
Bring in the engineers. Good idea. Okay. Do we have a question called? Questions was called? All those in favor? Nine zero. Oh, okay. Nine zero. Jeez. Another one.
Thank you, your worship. Public Works Committee Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor Mackler. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the request for quotes for a 12-capacity hand-fed towable chipper, the bid of Atlantic Coastal Equipment in the amount of $63,0995 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Question's called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, nine zero. That's all right, Counsel Ramsey? I mean, Counsel McCabe? Yes, sir. Yep, just one second. Okay. Absent. Okay. Like most nights, we need an extension. So I need a resolution to move beyond the eight, three-hour span or three-hour limit. Moved by Counsel Beck, sick by Counsel Mert. Question? All those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Okay. Thank you, sir. Do you have another resolution?
Your worship, Public Works Committee Resolution Number Three, moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor Mackler. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public tender for Hillsborough Hall New Elevator, the bid of McLean Construction Limited, APM McLean, in the amount of $1,335,039 plus all applicable taxes be rejected.
Counsel Bernard.
Thank you, your worship. So my understanding is from reading the minutes here is that the, the price is, I guess they feel somewhat inflated because of the time of year and the schedule of timeline for the work and so on. So I guess what I wouldn't mind finding out now is, because this was for an elevator for, for people that had disabilities that couldn't, couldn't access the upstairs or downstairs in the hall. There's a chairlift, that's not for people in wheelchairs, as we found out. That's for people with bad legs, bad back, whatever, find it difficult to climb up the stairs. But not for people that have disabilities and in wheelchairs and paralyzed from the waist down and so on. So I guess I'm looking for what is, what is the next step? From what I read, it's 1.3 million because of the time, because of the condensed schedule. So they might understand that this is going to go back out to tender and they're hoping to get better prices at a different time of year.
Counsel McCabe.
That would be my understanding. That was discussion at the committee level. And they were also looking at possibly, was there other solutions based on that price, whether it could be at the back door with ground elevation and different things to get people in more accessibly for sure. But they felt that based on the price they came in, and, and Scott, I'll let you elaborate on the why, but that it was recommended we wait and look at either a new re-tender and get that done. Wouldn't have been done this year apparently anyway, or look at different options to make sure that we were able to meet the accessibility lens, but also within a budget that was within reason.
Confering to the chief?
Absolutely.
Chief Engineer.
Yeah, through your worship to Counsel Bernard, exactly that we were concerned with just such an inflated price. We're working with our consultant right now, looking at different options. One is, is it, is there a benefit for us to purchase the elevator and supply it? Because right now it was a, the consult, or the contractor would purchase, procure and propose, purchase that elevator and install it. So we're wondering, is that, did they put up a markup or was there a significant markup for delays that we aren't aware of? So those are some of the options that we're looking at. We're looking at the schedule. We know the building is used throughout the year. So we were trying to find a time in the year where we didn't impact as much. Are we able to allow a little more impact on the building and the users didn't extend the schedule to, to allow for a longer extended timeframe for a contractor to come in? And maybe a smaller contractor may be more interested in it. They have a longer time to finish the project. And then the other concern was trying to get a foundation in. If they're trying to do it in the winter, there's more cost for heating and all that stuff. So there, there were a number of questions that we had with the price that we thought, if we go back and review what was submitted and look at our scope of work and adjust some of those factors, we think we can get a better price at the end of the day.
Counsel Bernard.
So from that, I hear that we're, the design that was done for the building, we're still on track for that design.
Your worship through to Counsel Bernard. Our goal is to keep the original design. And we were very pleased with how it changed, you know, it changed the area. It looks quite nice on it. And yeah, so that is our first goal, is to go with that existing design, but modify some of the scope to bring the prices down. And like, as you asked, are we going to re-tender? Yes. It just may be in a couple of pieces where we may purchase the elevator first and then It just may be in a couple of pieces where we may purchase the elevator first and then find a contractor to do the, the building outfit. So those are some things we're gonna figure out in the next month and hopefully get a re-tender, tender packages back out, hoping sometime November.
Okay, so, yep. So it, it is definitely going ahead. That's, it has, it requires an elevator. It's, it's a big obstacle at the, at the Hillsborough Centre. Question? There's a question here. Called? Called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, nine zero. Anymore? Is that it? Okay, just one second. Okay, so we're on to, I believe, environment and sustainability, correct? Counselor Bernard.
Getting this out, seems awful slow tonight.
What?
Seems awful slow, getting it to, anyway. Your worship, Environment Sustainability Committee.
Someone else is using a lot, but keep going.
Environment Sustainability Committee met September 18th. The minutes are in the clut in your package, just so there's no confusion. There's minutes in the packets there from resolutions that we already passed, special meeting. So there's no resolutions tonight, but you'll see those minutes and the results from the resolutions that we passed, I believe, September 28th, your worship. So just some highlights. Work is underway to update the Public Transit Strategic Plan for PEI's capital area. Public input is critical or crucial to the plan, so to kick things off, a public survey is now available online at charlottownhall.ca and is live until October 29th, so we're looking for lots of input. An open house is also planned for the Charlestown Library Learning Centre on October the 18th, your worship, on the same topic, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. The city's Waste Reduction Week is taking place from October 16th to the 22nd alongside numerous other municipalities across Canada. The Environment Sustainability Department will be partnering with local organizations to offer events throughout the week, including the return to the Fix-It Fair, which is a very popular fair, your worship, the department puts on. But a full breakdown of the week's events are found at charlottown.ca/wasteweek. And the other, only other issue, your worship, or good news, I suppose, is September broke our record for being the busiest month in history for the transit in Charlestown. So your worship, rider for the month of September alone, 137,259. September 15th broke the record as the busiest day on record for Charlestown with 6,562 riders. So your worship, to year-to-date, 941,445 riders. If you worship, if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Any questions? So Counselor, I did do the CNIB Ride the Bus this past week with the Canadian National Institute of the Blind, and they're doing a survey of some of the challenges with the transit, and that survey will be released this coming Thursday. So it might be something you want to look at. I know that it, they will be forwarding it to, like Cassidy, T3, but it's something you should follow up on.
Okay, and that just reminds me, and I probably should remind, Nova is gonna be coming to Charlestown with a fully electric bus.
Oh.
And Jessica will be giving invitations to those who may want to jump on, see how it works. So they're gonna be there bringing an electric bus here to Charlestown.
Great news.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, no resolutions? Okay. Strategic Priorities, Communications, Intergovernmental Cooperation. Counselor Norman Beck.
All right, thank you, your worship. So the Strategic Priorities, Communications, Intergovernmental Cooperation came in on September 28th and October 3rd, and the minutes are included in the package. I do want to just mention a couple of things. I too was fortunate to be able to attend the Capitol, Canadian Capital Cities, Capital Cities Committee of Organisation Conference.
Commission.
Recently with Mayor Brown and with Deputy Mayor Yankoff as well. And I can honestly say that the, it's obviously my first conference that I've attended of that, but I've been to many conferences in the past, and there's always some kind of session that you, let's be honest, you're not off on, or you may not be that interested in, or it may not be particularly relevant. I can honestly say that every session that was presented at that conference was engaging, relevant, on-topic, and meaningful. And I have to give, I have to tip my hand to the committee that put it together, and I know Laurel Lee, Charlotte Nicholson, Doug Dumay, and Wayne Long down in the, uh, A C, E C N T.
Economic Development.
Economic Development. They put a tremendous amount of work into putting in a first-rate conference, and the work really showed in terms of what was done, and I can't wait for the next conference in January. And it's certainly a tremendous opportunity. I, I would love to see all capital cities involved. I know there are some who have decided not to opt in for whatever reasons that may be, but tremendous opportunity, tremendous learning opportunity, and a tremendous opportunity for people to share and collaborate. The other thing I'm pretty, I, I do want to mention too is the parquet development. We did receive some intriguing proposals on that, and those will be, that work will begin here soon enough, and I look forward to seeing what comes out of that in terms of initiatives, proposals, ideas from the developers. I know in talking with our manager of Public Works, Scott Adams, he's very excited about the project as well, too. So excited to see where that lands and what we end up with. And so apart from that, I will entertain any questions that you may have. Thanks.
Counselor McCabe.
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, and thank you, Counselor Beck, for your report there. I'm just looking, I see that you're looking to move the Code of Conduct for public appointments through. I'm excited about this. I think it's really important when we have the boards reporting to committees that they understand what their role is and what their scope is. I guess I just want to get clarification, who will be going through this Code of Conduct with the boards? Will that be each chair that's sitting in? Will that be something done by staff from Strategic Priorities? And when can we expect this information to get down to our boards?
Counselor Beck.
My understanding is that there was going to be a series of onboarding sessions that would be conducted by the professional staff, I think Eleanor, I believe, was going to be overseeing that, but correct me if I'm wrong on that, Eleanor, but that was the intent. I think the original intent was to try to come up with a consistent set of parameters under which all the committees could work. And, and a lot of this you see is reflected in, especially in the part on Section 10. I know that was one of the issues about media communication and speaking as one voice and that sort of thing. So I think some of the feedback that did come back as concerns from counselors has been incorporated into this document, and now the important part is to take the next step and relay the information. But Eleanor, if you had anything else to add other than that, you could chime in as well.
C O, C A O Eleanor Mohammed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I want to add one other thing after just answering this question. So I think what we might do as an approach is have online onboarding for all the committees to call into, so it might be myself or another senior member of staff who will offer the training of the Code of Conduct. The second point that I just wanted to add to the chair's report was simply notice being given tonight that an amendment will be occurring, proposed to the City of Charlestown procedural bylaw, and this notice is being given in accordance with the Municipal Government Act requirements that we give notice when we are looking at the procedural bylaw. Thank you.
Counsel Bernard.
Thank you, your worship. Counselor Beck, I'm just wondering, your housing, the Housing Accelerator Fund and the letter from the federal government. Just looking for some clarity. So, so in the letter, it talks about adopt four units as of right citywide. So I'm assuming as of right citywide, meaning any vacant lot in the City of Charlestown, regardless of the zoning, you'll put up at least a four unit. So I hope this is gonna go to the public at some point. This would be part of the official plan, that we have our meetings and let people know then, would it?
Counselor Beck.
Counselor Beck.
Yeah, that, that was an area that we were not i- in agreement with, and so that is in the response to Minister Fraser in the, in the letter where that's not something that we are supportive of. There were concerns about the, the flood risks, there was concerns about not having a full, although our mass transit is really coming along, there are issues about the mass transit. That's why the alternatives to achieve some of what Minister Fraser was looking for in the letter is, in the response that we made, that's the letter that we would support, and that's the way that we would try to achieve what it is that Minister Fraser was hoping from us. So it's a little different way, maybe, of skinning the cat, but it's, it's achieving a lot of the same goals, just in maybe a little different manner. But we weren't comfortable with the four, as of right, four units per lot. That was not something that we were, and that was kind of precipitated the response that was made. And again, C O Eleanor, if you have anything else to add, feel free to--
C O Eleanor Mohammed.
Thank you, your worship, and through to Counsel Bernard. Yeah, really quick, four, four units as of right wouldn't work as a blanket for Charlestown. It would essentially give forward permission to clear out the 500 lots without heritage components or anything if we allowed that as of right. So the response letter proposes instead that we look at something called net residential density, which takes the density for, or the amount of units in an area and calculates, say if we were going to do four units per net res, or four units as of right, what would that look like if we were actually to do that for a whole neighborhood? And you make that calculation of how many units you want to achieve for a neighborhood. So it doesn't mean that every lot would have four units, but maybe on the corner where you have transit, you might allow more density and you go up and you go higher in that particular part of the neighborhood. So that's, that's what's being proposed in there. What also is stated in the letter is that we have to adhere to legislated planning processes, which include public process. So for anything that we do go forward with, it has to go through the official plan and zoning and development bylaw, when we revamp that, there's a public process with that as well. And that's at the very end of the letter that we speak to that.
Okay, so that's not the letter that was sent back to Minister Sean Fraser, signed by the mayor? At least I don't see it in this one, but anyway. Excuse me.
So the final sentence says in the letter that's attached to the resolution, it plans, so counsel, it plans to take these initiatives forward as part of formal process to review and adopt a new official plan in zoning, zoning and development bylaw, including a statutory requirement for public consultations.
Yeah, I see that. Yeah. Okay, so just a couple of other questions in. So in A, it talks about development to main, so the city will focus on directing development to main corridors and nodes to achieve a density equivalent to four units per lot. Then you go down to number two in A, and it says the city proposes to enable, we propose that six-story buildings would be permitted along corridors and nodes as of right. So are you just talking near the university and, and how college for that? Okay.
And we made that clear. Correct, Counselor Beck? I just, want to turn on your mic there? That's, I know that's, we made that clear, correct?
And--
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, so that's why there's the two. There's one for general Charlestown and one for near the educational institution.
Go ahead, no, you go ahead.
Yeah, and that's, and that's what was part of the request of Minister Fraser as well, too, is he wanted to increase the density specifically around those areas, and so this was an attempt to accommodate that request. So it's, it kind of, it actually, in, in terms of the alignment of the nodes and the corridors, it aligns with a lot of what we've been talking about in the public consultation and the draft official plan. So it is, it does fit in well with a lot of what potentially may be coming down the road, although that plan has not been officially drafted, as we know, but it's not, it's not totally out of line, in line with that. So the, really, the, the purpose of the letter is to try and respond to the requests that came from Minister Fraser. And so as C O, C A O Eleanor alluded to, there's different ways to arrive at the same end result, and we're just trying to find a different way to arrive at that same end result to achieve the increase in the housing supply, but do it in a manner that, because what, like these letters are going out to, London just recently approved one, they're going out right across Canada.
Yeah.
What fits in Charlestown may not be applicable at all to what's going on in London, Ontario, right? So we have to be able to react and respond to what our particular circumstances are. So we're trying to do that in a manner that is conducive to our, to our city and to our needs. It's kind of what it, what it's all about.
Perfect, yeah. Because the ministers--
Yeah, no, okay, we have to move on, because again, we have to be equitable, and two times, we've already done that, so--
Yeah, but he jumped up the answer when I wasn't done asking my second question.
Well, the resolution, is there a resolution coming forward on this? Yes, bring it up then, that's, that's what I want to do.
Thank you.
Counselor Beck, well done in explaining it. I, I think that this is a great process that's been started, and again, Sue, Sue Fraser has been part of it, so is the C A O, and, and Janice, cannot, cannot forget Janice Harper that's been working with us on this project, because I think the money, the, the funding is what? It, it looks, it's in the area of 6.4 to 6.5 million dollars that's provided through this accelerator fund. That'll be of great assistance to our planning, development, and heritage department. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, no. Just one, just one point of information, we found this out this afternoon in our minutes here, it says Minister Ferris, Sean Ferris, and again, so just have that correction made if we could as well.
That's been Mr. Sean Fraser. Okay, good. Do you want to go to the resolutions? Is it all right? Good?
Strategic Priorities, Communications, and Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Deputy Mary Yankoff. Be resolved, be it resolved that city council agrees to invite both developers who have submitted an expression of interest to participate in the request for proposal phase, that the city agrees to compensate both parties with a $10,000 stipend to cover a portion of the costs associated with completed renderings, floor plans, and a presentation expense from the Strategic Priorities project budget. Also that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counselor Dron.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Thank you, Counselor Beck. Yes, sorry. I just want to get a clarification here about policy and procedure. You know, we went out to R F, R F P for this proposal. This is a multimillion-dollar, you know, I would say, development where you, you have to take down the parquet and build a huge development. I can only imagine how many millions we're in. And, and here we're gonna just give these developers 10,000 each to, to start a plan? Like, if, if we were gonna do this, why didn't we put it out at the first to get other developers saying, okay, listen, I'll go down this road, I'll, I'll get $10,000 to, to compensate me for a plan or a process or, or stuff? I mean, I, I know when you're building, money is a big, big deal, but I just don't see the reasoning why we, we give out money when, you know, that was part of the process, is to come up with a plan, tell us what you're gonna do, we'll sit down with you to the, to the highest bidder or, or the best plan. But if you're giving out money, I just, I just don't think it's fair to developers that didn't apply, because this money is not available to them. Thank you.
Counselor Beck.
Yeah, thank you for your question or comment, Counsel Dron. I think what's important to understand with this is, I guess, a couple of things. First off, the, the process was open to anyone who wished to apply. And the first part was our, our E O I, Request for Expression of Interest. And the first part was REI, Request for Expression of Interest. So it really wasn't into that formal rendering idea stage. It was basically submit your idea, what do you got in mind? How can we sort of, what do you think is a, see as a potential fit for that? So that was the first step of the, of the, and that was clearly articulated in the expression of interest. The other thing that I think is important to remember is that we do have some skin in the game in the sense that the city is maintaining ownership of the property.
Yeah.
And so because of that, I think it's, it is, it's not an uncommon practice in these development sort of initiatives to do that. And the other part is, since we are maintaining ownership into the property, I think it's fair, I think it's a reasonable contribution to the process, and I think that's a demonstration that we are willing partners. We're going to collaborate with the developers to come up with something that works for the residents of the city. Scott, if you have anything more to add than, than that, feel free to chime in.
Chief Engineer?
Your worship through to Counselor Dron. So Counselor Beck was right on the mark, just a couple of other points I'd like to add. So this is much, it's a unique project in terms of it's more of a P3 model, so public-private partnership. Again, as we will maintain and own the property itself, will maintain the ownership of the property, we're looking to development community to, for their ideas on how to densify this property, how they can integrate an existing parquet or build a new parquet within confines of a mixed-use facility. So whether it's commercial, office space, or residential and condos, whatever they imagine, that's, that's what we're trying to achieve with the space. At the end of the day, the goal, they, the price of the, the complex will be on the developer. They are the ones going to be making the money, managing the facility, they will pay the cost to own the facility as well. They get the land to build on with a lease agreement for the, from the city to build. So it's a bit of a unique concept in that way, and so that's why we, we want to go this route and to, again, to have some control over the project, and that's where we get it with the ownership of the property and choosing which party we will want to move forward with negotiating a final agreement on the project. Secondly, the reason why I want to provide a $10,000 stipend is not upfront, it's at the completion of their presentation. So both developers are going to get a package here relatively soon, once we approve, if this does get approved tonight, inviting them to submit a proposal. So a typical proposal, when we talk about like an engineering, I go out all the time for consulting services, we don't give stipends for those. Those are relatively straightforward documents those consultants have put, they essentially take a standard document that they have and they put in new information in terms of here's the scope and here's how we expect to fix your issue. This is more complex because we're asking for them to give us renderings of what that's going to look like, how that, how that building is going to integrate with the surrounding neighborhood so that you folks here at council can have a better understanding before you make a decision on what that's going to look like. We also plan to take advantage of our city hall website, put this information out to the public, once the presentations have been made from these developers to council, and that's expected to happen sometime in January. Again, we were fine tuning our schedule at, as we speak. But once those presentations are made by both of those parties, then that information will be made available and what that will look like. They can provide feedback, which we will compile, provide to council, so we can make a final decision on what we feel is the best fit for this, for our property here downtown city, downtown Charlottetown. So again, the stipend really is to encourage some really great drawings, which is something we don't typically ask for in a proposal process, and it's quite expensive for that work.
Counselor Dron.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the clarification, Scott. I'm just asking, like, I, as long as I've been here, this has never happened before. This is a multimillion-dollar operation here. We're going to let them use the land. We, we're selling the parquet, that's the only thing that makes money other than property taxes, our parquets and speeding tickets or, or leasing tickets. So at the end of the day, we give them $10,000 to come back with a plan of what they're going to build on our land, and, and we, we won't make any money on, on any of the parques or anything. That's, that's all on the developer. You know, so, so at the end of the day, you're looking at major money here, like this is going to be in the multitudes of millions of dollars, but yet we feel that we should give them 10,000? I mean, that's not going to deter them. I just, you know, when, when we're looking at budgets, we're looking at money, what we can do, this is not going to deter a multimillion-dollar person. It's more of a gift that, you know, I can understand your analogy of it, but I just, I just can't support it. But, but thank you for your interpretation.
You're all right, Counselor Beck? Okay. Counselor Twill, you want to go through the chair?
So, so in terms of leasing the land, what will the cost be for the developer if we were to select a developer, once the renditions come back to council and we, we look at one and decide to choose one of the two? So what will be the cost in terms of the lease, the developer paying to the city of Charlottetown?
Yeah, Counsel Twill, I, I think that doesn't reflect the resolution. The resolution is about-
No, I understand that, but the manager-
Completing renderings, floor plans-
I know, I understand that.
Presentation expense from the strategic priorities project budget. That's all it's for. It's not about the deal that we're going into.
Well, he talked about a lease, okay, in his presentation. The manager talked about a lease, so what is the cost of the lease?
Anyways, you haven't, now wait, are you going through the chair? Chair, do you know what the cost? Go ahead.
No, I'll defer to Scott on that one. It's-
Chief Engineer?
But I don't, I think I know the answer, but I'll defer-
So, your worship through to Counselor Twill, the likely lease will be $1 a year, and the contribution the city gets is a public parking facility that we no longer have to pay, you know, probably in the vicinity of 20 to 30 million dollars to rebuild, nor do we have annual maintenance and long-term repair costs. It's significant money that the city does not have to spend out of our, out of our tax dollars. We can now move forward and use that money for other programs, initiatives the city would like to move forward with.
Counselor McLeary, question to the chair?
Yeah, and just on that, just on that point, would it, and there'd be, and getting ahead of ourselves here because till the, till the thing becomes, I guess, real and we have a plan and, and, you know, and a vote, would, would it be correct to assume that there'd be no tax, no tax concession or property tax forgiveness on this development, on that piece?
Can I just ask, Counselor Beck, I, I know you've done a great job in the background, but are we really moving beyond what this 10,000?
I think that's, I think that's a down-the-road question.
Yeah, yeah, and same is-
I think what we have to do to decide right now is, do we want to proceed with the motion as outlined?
Yeah.
I think there's not, not to disregard the questions or the validity of them, I think what's important right now is that we make a decision now, do we want to proceed to the next phase and under these conditions by providing a $10,000 stipend to the developers to assist with that?
Yeah.
The other questions I think will come to light as we get more information. They'll, Scott will come back with a package, the developers will submit them, they'll come back to us, we'll have an opportunity to look at the package in its entirety and then make a decision as to whether we want to proceed, yea or nay, with those or go on our own with our own, who knows? I don't want to predetermine anything, but this is really just a phase one or step one of multi-step process.
We, we've been talking about this three or four years. Like, you know what, we're now to a step where it is a triple P, and Counselor Bernard, no different than our triple P with the transit system, we've done studies for the transit system, and that's been to the benefit of, 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 of the city and also a benefit to the owner of T3. So it's, this is a good deal, and I think going down the road, it's more than just a parking garage, it's office, it's commercial, it's residential, all about increasing the density in the downtown. Question? Question call? Okay. All those in favor? Okay, all those against? Seven to two. Okay, do you have another resolution there?
Thank you, your worship. Strategic Priorities Communications and Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Deputy Mary Yankoff. Be it resolved that the city of Charlottetown address the letter from Honorable Sean Fraser dated September 25th, 2023, on the matter of its application to the federal government's Housing Accelerator Fund with a response letter as attached.
Counselor Bernard?
Thank you, your worship. So Counselor Beck, just on number three, on the, on the response letter, we, we propose to reduce restrictions in our development. So one question, we propose to remove subjective measures that make it difficult for builders to understand what will be approved. I would hope that they know what they're applying for and they'd understand what's approved, but anyway, I don't disagree why that's there. Accessory dwelling unit program. We propose to expand the maximum floor space to 1,076.39 square feet. I'm just wondering, what is a square foot that's allowed now for the accessory buildings?
Just, could I just get, Counselor Beck, do you want to defer that to Janice? Janice, you'll have to come up and use the mic, please. So Janice Harper is working on this project with the Housing Accelerator Fund, and she does have planning background 20-plus years.
Thank you. In answer to the question, it's about 700, I don't have the bylaw in front of me, but it's about 700 square feet maximum right now. And that number was chosen because that was taken from another letter. There are a number of other letters that the minister has sent to other municipalities, and it was the minister's suggestion in another letter. It could have been to Brampton or Calgary or London, but that, that suggestion came from the minister, if I recall correctly, and that is why it is used in the draft response to, from the city of Charlottetown.
Just wondering, so the accessory dwellings, does that have to be a part of the house? It's built onto the house or it is just separate? Because it's not the garden suite we're talking about, it's accessibility, right?
Yeah, do you have a number of questions? If you want to put them all-
No, that's it.
Okay. Can you ans, do you want to go through? Counselor Beck, is that all right? Good. Janice Harper?
So to clar, to clarify, the question is, is an accessory dwelling a garden suite? Or is it?
An accessory dwelling would be built onto the existing house, I assume.
It could be built onto the existing house.
And it can also be a separate?
It could also be a separate dwelling as well, or a separate unit.
So then the garden suite really went up to 1,076 square feet then, really?
But your, your question is, is it gone up to 1,000?
Could an accessory unit be up to 1,000 square feet? Is that the question?
Yes.
Yes, that's, that's the implication. Yes.
This is the access, this is the accessory dwelling. Does this impact the garden suites that we approved? Because I think those square feet were a lot less than 1,000. Does that now, does that change the garden suites?
What, again, through the chair?
Through the chair.
Janice, what's?
So this, there was a request from the minister to directly address accessory dwelling units and to make them more affordable. That is the, the letter from the minister, and this response that we have crafted would, is suggesting that the bylaw would be amended to permit larger accessory dwelling units after the bylaw is amended.
CAO Eleanor? Yeah, just, she'll.
Thank you, your worship. And through to Counselor Bernard. As part of the Housing Accelerator application, a part of that is to, proposed is to review and revamp the zoning and development bylaw. So we might see in that a whole bunch of definitions changing, as well as looking for ways to cut red tape and get housing approved faster, which may also tie into some of the earlier conversation about what needs to come to council versus what doesn't.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. No, 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 Counsel, look, I've, I've made the rule because it has to be fair and equitable, and I don't want to, so again, Janice, it's going from 700 square feet to 1,000 plus?
Yes.
Yeah. The lot, the accessory is, is right now, that's one of the issues we're going to be addressing also, that accessory buildings are now anything a .5 acre and up. Down the road, I think that is something that Counselor McCabe was asking, maybe we should reduce the size of that, that, that lot. But that's not part of this proposal, correct? No, no. Question? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay? Nine zero. Okay, do we have another resolution? Nope. Okay. Is that it, Counselor Beck? You don't want to have anything else? We can stay here a little longer. Okay. So our next report is finance. And Betty French, who has been waiting all night, she's got the table. Counselor McLeary? Okay.
Thank you, your worship. Finance Audit and Tendering Committee met October 4th. There are no resolutions in your package. The, the reason for the brevity in the report here this evening, if you look at your minutes on item, item six on adjournment, the remainder of the agenda has been deferred to a special meeting since the meeting had reached its allotted time. We spent a lot of time on a particular topic, and we weren't able to get to, to our, a lot that was on our agenda, and that special meeting is scheduled for tomorrow at 12 noon. So that's the, that's the reason for the, for the brevity. If there's any questions around that short presentation, what you have in front of you this evening, I'll be doing my best to answer them. Thank you.
No? No questions? Counsel, okay, Deputy Mayor, please stand up and show from the rooftop.
I want to ask this question, but I don't want to make a big to-do about it.
No, 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 we got lots of time. Don't worry.
I listened to the finance meeting-
Yes.
And there were 56 minutes of conversation-
Yes.
On business arising from the minutes, but when I look at the business arising from the minutes, minutes, there's one sentence. I'm just confused, and maybe it's, maybe in one sentence you summarized everything you talked about in that 56 minutes, but I did listen to the minute, meeting. So like I said, I don't want to make a big to-do about it, it's getting late, but I was just a bit perplexed at that. Thank you.
Counselor McLeary, did you approve those minutes?
Yeah, yes, the, so if you listen to, if you listen to the meeting, you know what the, there was a lot of discussion on one item that, that held, held the committee up for the length of time it did, and that, that was an issue to, that was discussion around the, the seniors active living center and the, and the, and the agreement, lease agreement with them. That's, there's still some negotiation going on around that, and that's, that was the, that was the reason for the length, the, of the finance committee, committee meeting, and it didn't allow us to get to the, the other agenda items. And like I said, the other agenda items will be addressed tomorrow at our finance meeting.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, so nothing to report. Okay, well, we can move on. Human Resources, Counselor Bernard?
All right, thank you, your worship. Last but not least, the Human Resources Committee met on October 4th. The minutes of the meeting are in your package, and there are no resolutions before you tonight. If there's any questions, I'll do my best to address them. Our manager, Emily MacLeod, sends her regrets.
Counselor Twill?
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Turk, I want to thank you for your report. Talked to some of the city workers that are concerned about taking on extra work, whether it be Public Works or any other department, when it comes to picking up, you know, needles throughout the city, whether it be in our parks, on the city's right-of-way, public spaces. Could you please review that with your committee in terms of why the onus is on the city workers, whether it be in Public Works, Parks and Recreation, or any other department? Why the onus is on city workers to pick up needles that could be contaminated, laced with, say, fentanyl, crystal meth, or hepatitis C? And if that's the case, then who's liable? Is the city of Charlottetown liable for our workers, which I don't believe is in their job description, to pick up discarded needles all over the city of Charlottetown? I mean, never before have I experienced that in, in terms of our city workers taking on that task and that responsibility. And please, if you could, I'd like to know who authorized that and who instructed our city staff to pick up these poisonous needles. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Counselor Twill. I certainly will, you know, I certainly understand the concerns by, by staff. I think I've publicly stated myself that I was concerned with members of the staff addressing these safety concerns through our city, and especially around picking up garbage, not just needles, but also garbage in, in the properties, our unsightly properties where we have that, but, but also these dangerous and hazardous material. So I think it's a great point, one that certainly I will bring forward to the H R Committee, Committee, and also to the C A O for a response in regard. I can't speak to job descriptions and what staff can and can't do, or shouldn't be doing, or whether they have training, or, or whether they don't have training. But those are all great points that you raise, and I'll certainly bring those forward to try to address that concern for you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. New business? Counsel, Counselor Beck, just one second. Counselor Beck, did you want to have a say? New business?
Yeah, I just
No, no, we get, we get a resolution first, don't we?
Oh, yeah.
Do the resolution.
One more resolution.
It's in the package. New business number one, Ahmed, Ahmed be appointed to the Affordable Houses? Yeah.
Thank you, your worship. New business resolution number one, moved by Deputy Mary Ankaugh, seconded by Counselor Beck. Be it resolved that effective immediately, Ahmed Ahmed be appointed to Affordable Housing Advisory Committee as recommended by his worship, Mayor Philip Brown.
Counselor Beck? Good? Call the question? Okay, all those in favor? Okay. Nine zero? Nine zero? Yeah. Just about your notice of motion, do you want to give that now? Procedurally, it should have been done during your report. Can I, can I just ask the Counselor? Counselor, can, can, can you just read your notice of resolution?
Yeah, I, I would have done it under my report, but I, I saw it under new business.
It's still notice of motion under new business. Procedural bylaw?
She didn't.
Yeah.
Technically, it should have been me.
We're going to let it go. Yeah, it's fine to go.
Okay, just, I just want to make two notices of motion for upcoming meeting. And one would be that we go completely to paperless council and committee agenda packages, that we receive everything electronically. And the other one would be with regards to not using cell phones, personal cell phones in the council chamber during our meetings. So those, I just want to put those out as notices of motion for our next meeting, as I look at my personal cellphone.
Yeah, there's no discussion in the notice of motion?
No discussion.
Not now?
We will at a later time.
So procedurally, C A O, or can you just clarify it? Good.
Thank you, your worship. So it's just a notice that the motion is coming today, so there's no, no discussion, and it will be scheduled at a future council meeting after they've gone through the appropriate committee.
Then the other notice of motion, C A O? That's the one with the police officers?
So you want, so there's a second notice of motion from your worship for considering, consideration upcoming council meeting for the need for additional police officers.
So it's a notice motion, that means we'll have to get the information, and then it'll come back for discussion? And, and it's going to be sooner than better, sooner than later, correct? Yeah, well, anyways, we'll just reckon that. Good? Okay. And I think we're at a motion to adjourn. Okay, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.